I banged me gavel.
This is my first time with the gavel.
Okay, good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming tonight. I'm gonna call the meeting in order. This is the public hearing of the Hopkins budget committee on February twenty twenty three. And we are going to start tonight with the pledge of leaders and Norm.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America.
I just want to take a minute to talk about the process tonight, especially for those who may not have been to hearings before. So the public hearing is a chance for the budget committee to share what we as of January twenty fifth are recommending for the budgets for the school district, the towns, and the precincts. We've gone through several months of conversation, even to the last couple of months for those who are based boards. And so tonight you get a chance to hear from them and from us on specifically the numbers we represent recommending. And we'll hear from the representatives of those boards, like how they came to what the proposal was. So the word that we're going is we're going to start on the town. And then we'll go to the county precinct, the Hopkins precinct, and then the school district. There was there's no particular rhyme or reason to that order. So don't need anything to it. After each of the proposed budgets and the associated warrant articles is presented to you, we will open it up for public comments and we hope that you will be welcome. You can put on your feedback. It makes a difference for most of us in the budget committees. Think about the choices that we have to make. And then at the end of the hearing, we'll reopen for one final public comment session for anything at all of what you heard tonight. We'll then adjourn the public hearing and the budget committee will then deliberate on over tonight. And we will then presumably take some votes on what's on the warrant articles that you will all see in March. So that's the process tonight. And we're going to try to use the mic just to make sure everyone can hear us. So I'm going to ask all the speakers to on the budget committee to use this mic. Or let's do or the mic up there representing. And then when we get to the color of comment, we're able to put the mic around and ask people to speak into the mic. And we're going to start with the town's operating budget. And I think Henry Tron, who is the select board representative to the budget committee, is going to present candidates on Zoom tonight. But Blackberry, Eric, Ken, and Neil is getting you set up. So when you are ready, take it away.
Okay, thank you, Mark. And first, I'd just like to apologize for not attending this meeting in person. But I'm dealing with an exhausting bout of COVID, and I'm sure no one really would like me to be sitting there in person.
So. Please apologize, but thank you for not coming.
My wife would love to get me out of the house, but that's a different story. I want to thank everyone who's come to this meeting in person or remotely. It's important that you understand what we, the town, school, and the precincts are proposing for twenty twenty three. What the budget committee decides at the end of this meeting, of this evening, for the operating budget amount is what will go into the town meeting warrant. So let me start by thanking those involved in this budget process on the town side. Our department heads for creating their budget that the select board only slightly modified. Finance Director Kelly Henley and Town Administrator Neil Cass. The many committee members, including yourselves, the budget committee, my fellow select board members, and the many wonderful volunteers in town for everyone's hard work and dedication in helping develop this budget and helping to keep the town running as smoothly as it does. As I say each year, it's a real team effort. So in developing this budget, the select board had several goals. Maintain the current level of services. Minimize the effects of the current level of inflation, as we are all feeling. Maintain a well-qualified staff. Plan for the transfer station lagoon cleanup. Make progress on the long overdue road maintenance issues. And all while recognizing that many of our fellow citizens are stressed financially. Several of the regular budgeting challenges have been enhanced in twenty twenty three. It is unknown what will happen with inflation, the economy in general, fuel and utility costs. And what if any additional funding or grants will the town receive from the state or federal governments? Among the many realities of twenty twenty three are heating fuel up in forty seven percent. Gas diesel up about eighty seven percent. Demolition hauling up about one hundred and forty five percent. A Houston barn initial bond payment of almost thirty five thousand. Employee merit pool of one hundred and sixty seven thousand, based on a six point five percent pool. Transfer station lagoon closure, engineering costs of one hundred and fifty thousand. And ongoing road and sewer infrastructure needs. So to summarize where we ended up, this proposal resulted in all in estimated twenty twenty three tax rate increase of forty six cents per thousand or six point four six percent. And we are proposing a two million dollar ten year bond for road rebuilding, which won't hit the tax rate until twenty twenty four. With that, let me turn to the process we followed this year in order to put this proposal together. Back in August, the department head started preparing their budgets with the guidance to just focus on needs, not wants. They did an excellent job of that. Next, the department heads met with the town administrator to review their requests, the result of which was provided to the select board on November fourth. Then the select board started the process of meeting with each department head to fully understand, review, and scrutinize their requests, including capital wants. The board also heard and ultimately accepted the recommendations of the CIP committee. Then the select board continued the hard work of trying to balance town needs with affordability to our taxpayers. Once the select board had assembled the budget, it was presented to the budget committee. Following discussions and the select, the select board updating the discussions resulted in the select board updating the cleanup plan for the transfer station septic lagoons. And with that, the budget committee moved this plan forward for tonight. So the details, the select board proposal. Tonight, I'll address all of the money related warrant issues as well as our revenue assumptions and use of the fund balance which went into developing that spending plan that creates the estimated tax rate for twenty twenty three. On the revenue side, operating revenues, including the sewer fund, are projected to increase by about seventy thousand dollars or one point eight nine percent over twenty twenty two. Excluding sewer fund revenue, the increase is only fourteen thousand because we are projecting to receive about a hundred and thirty six thousand less from the state room and meals fund. In twenty twenty two, we received a one-time additional payment from the state. On the positive side, revenues are projected to increase in many areas, including motor vehicle registrations of forty thousand. And I always say, you know, please buy new cars. Ambulance charges up fifteen thousand. Webster's share of transfer station costs up forty thousand. Revenues from transfer station commercial are down twenty five thousand, mainly due to not accepting septic waste anymore. Recycling receipts up fifteen thousand. Checking account interest up thirteen thousand due to slightly higher interest rates. And the revenues from the Tiff district to cover fifty percent of the cost of the Economic Development Director's salary and benefits of twenty three thousand. This is mainly an accounting adjustment only. So the the total operating budget proposed is nine million one hundred seventy seven thousand nine eighty seven. An increase of eight hundred ninety four thousand four seventy two or ten point eight percent over twenty twenty two. Excluding sewer, the numbers are eight million nine hundred thirty seven thousand eight sixty three. An increase of eight hundred fifty one thousand six ninety five or ten point five percent. The major drivers are a six and a half percent merit pool for our very deserving town employees of one hundred and sixty eight thousand. Remember there, we do not have the union. Hundred and fifty thousand for engineering costs for closure of the septic lagoons at the transfer station. I'll get into this in more detail later. Road shimmying and paving gravel and salt increasing by a hundred and fifty nine thousand. I'll also get into our overall proposal for roads shortly. Costs related to increases in gas, oil, and diesel of a hundred and seven thousand. Transfer station, transport, and disposal, including demolition haulage and tipping fees, mainly due to higher contract rates. Ninety four thousand. I'll also note that there are no new full or part time positions included in the budget. With that, let me give you a little more detail on the septic lagoon cleanup at the transfer station. For for many years over forty, private septic haulers have been disposing of septic picked up in Hopkins at the transfer station lagoons. This has been a common practice for many towns. During the permit renewal process in twenty twenty two, in cooperation with the New Hampshire DES, we made the decision to stop accepting this septic and are now proceeding to close and clean up the lagoon. To no one's surprise, testing at the site determined that there is PFAS present complicating the cleanup. For twenty twenty three, we've included a hundred and fifty thousand in the operating budget for engineering costs for planning and construction. After the cleanup plan was is developed during twenty twenty three in cooperation with DES, we anticipate requesting a bond in twenty twenty four with the actual cleanup. By then, we'll have a complete cleanup plan. We will, we also will be working to seek grants to help with the costs. And remember, Webster will be responsible for twenty five percent of all costs. There's also the possibility of the sludge from the wastewater treatment facility being able to be disposed of with this lagoon sludge, which has the potential of saving significant costs. We're proposing seven hundred and fifty six thousand going into the CRF as recommended by the CIP committee. And a hundred and five thousand five hundred going into the maintenance trust funds for a total of eight hundred and sixty one thousand. This is a hundred and twenty nine thousand more than last year. These expenditures follow our long established twenty year expenditure plan. But inflation took a huge toll this year, requiring a reworking of the plan. One of the many examples is the cost of the ten yard packer at the transfer station. It went up forty percent from a hundred and twelve thousand a year ago to a hundred and fifty nine thousand this year. The CIP committee really struggled with how to adequately fund the required items in a reasonable way, and I feel did a great job. The major change compared to twenty twenty three is an additional ninety thousand dollars going into the town facilities maintenance trust. Most of this will be used to replace the roof at the police station. For a list of each individual fund and proposed expenditure, look at page three of the, I believe, the handout that was made given today, tonight. Okay, pay by bag special revenue fund. I'll note that this article, which has no impact on the tax rate, allows the town to expend sixty thousand dollars. allows the town to expend sixty thousand dollars already collected from the sale of green bags for the purpose of offsetting the cost of collection and disposal of residential solid waste and such other direct costs is budgeted annually. Paid by bag revenue offsets Hopkins and share of the transfer station costs and only Hopkins and share. The unreserved fund balance, now moving to the finish line. We are fortunate this year to have an estimated fund balance available for two thousand and twenty three of almost eight hundred and seventy five thousand. The reason is so high is almost four hundred thousand that revenue of revenue over budget is primarily due to unanticipated revenues from the state ambulance charges and the sale of town property. As well as a special thanks to our town employees, we're able to keep two thousand and twenty two expenditures about a hundred thousand dollars under budget. So we're proposing to use five hundred and sixty thousand of that balance in two thousand and twenty three to offset taxes. To summarize, with all the items that I've presented, the result is a tax rate increase of six point four six percent or forty six cents per thousand, resulting in the town portion of the tax rate being seven dollars and fifty three cents per thousand. We have, as in prior years, conservatively assumed a half a percent increase in the townwide valuation due to new construction and renovations. So moving on to the proposed road bond, which will have no impact on the two thousand and twenty three tax rate, but would have an impact if passed beginning in two thousand and twenty four. We all want to have good, safe roads, and over the last six or seven years, you, the people voters in town have voted to increase the budget for shimming and paving by five percent annually and have approved two road bonds. Unfortunately, due to the dramatic increase in road materials, we find ourselves even farther behind than ever. In fact, about twenty three million behind. Thanks to Town Administrator Cass and D P W Director Blanchett, who have put together a road plan, helping us to have a better handle on things and deal with the regular road maintenance, including shimming, paving and chip sealing. With the increase of the proposed budget, a continued five percent in the shimming and paving line items encumbered funds from two thousand and twenty two and additional highway block grant funds from the state were able to address our maintenance backlog over the next five years and then maintain these roads moving forward. All right, that leaves the elephant in the room. Road rebuilds. The estimated cost at this time is over twenty million dollars. To begin to chip away at this road rebuilding backlog, we're proposing a two million dollar bond. Plan for this bond is to rebuild a large portion of Briar Hill Road. The road is not only in bad shape, but also has substantial traffic. There is concern about the liability to the town if roads are not kept safe and we have to increase to absorb increased maintenance costs for roads that are left deteriorating when they need to be rebuilt. In two thousand and twenty four, the estimated payment, assuming a five percent interest rate, would be three hundred thousand dollars, which is thirty eight cent per thousand impact on the town portion of the tax rate. At this time, even weighing the large need, the Select Board felt that seeking any larger amount would put too large of a burden on next year's tax rate and affordability. And that completes my presentation and I'll endeavor to answer any questions.
And just so the members of the public now, the budget committee voted on January twenty fifth to recommend both the operating budget and the road bond that Ken described. And so we are going to open this up to questions and comments from members of the public. And let's start with folks in the room, but also if you are on Zoom and are interested in asking a question or making a comment, please use the raise thing function and we'll monitor that and get it over at some point. So if you're interested in commenting your question, come on up to my And if you wouldn't mind just
Sure, my name is Meredith Hatfield and I live at sixty Apple Tree Lane. I wanted to start just by saying thank you for all the work that you all do. It's pretty significant effort and it's very much appreciated. I had a couple of questions, just trying to understand the solid waste landfill line. And on page two of the handout, it shows approved budget day twenty two, twenty thousand six hundred and fifty two, actual sorry, forty five thousand five, actual expense fifty six one forty. And then the proposed budget is two hundred thousand five hundred dollars. So I had a question about that. And I, in terms of the revenues, the transfer station, I was wondering, there I know I've been listening in on discussions lately about the green bag pay as you throw program and looking forward to participating and potentially a review of that to make sure that that is contributing to covering our waste cost. But I wondered on the revenue side, how much of an impact it has had because of the waiver that the Select Board granted to one company that collects trash that so that some folks aren't having to pay their way. So if just if I could get those questions answered, that would be really appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you.
As I understood Meredith's first question, why the significant increase in the cleanup costs, it's for the engineering costs related to the future cleanup of the transfer septic lagoons, and that's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars more they were putting in for the budget for two thousand and twenty three. As far as what any financial impact of the waiver, the Select Board granted, maybe Neil can help me, but I wouldn't assume there was any financial impact.
So the board, what what the board did is we allowed haulers to not use the bags but to pay the tipping fee. So actually, there is no financial impact because loads that were being brought with bags in them were not being charged at all. The fee was taken through the bags. And now if loads come and there's not three bags, they pay the tipping fee, which is what we pay quest ten percent. And actually, because the bag fee hasn't changed for ten years, actually thirteen years, probably we are doing a little better this way financially.
Any other questions or comments on this town operating budget or the road bond?
Hey, everyone. Bob Mattio, one oh eight Park Avenue. And I'm not sure if this was discussed or not earlier in the presentation. The bond will live the Fed rate height that this past weekend. In other words, I guess what I'm asking is, when was that impact? Figured was it back before that rate hike? And it looks like we're looking at another rate hike of point five percent before the town meeting. So would we see those numbers at the town meeting, what the actual, because it looks like it may change from those calculations or is that even back to them?
So Ken, can you really speak to how you work with the bond bank to come up with the estimate?
The 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 estimate that we've used at this point is, I think, still very conservative. It's five percent for a ten year bond. We would, in all likelihood, go out for a bond in conjunction with the state bond bank. And I believe the last time they went out, they came out with an interest rating in the twos. So I certainly can't guarantee anything near that, but I'm very confident that five percent is much higher than we're probably going to end up having to pay.
Thank you, Bob. Thanks, Ken. Any other questions?
I am Bill Moore of the three nine six Florida. And thank you all of you for spending your time and getting up for dinners and watching the nice basketball game while I'm here and do appreciate it. I'll make my questions quick, and these are probably just accounting questions. The hundred and sixty seven thousand merit increases, is that all in this budget under Personnel Administration? Or is some of it under D P W administration? Because this shows a difference of two hundred and five thousand. So I was curious where that hundred and sixty seven thousand line would show. Secondly, to, oh, the thirty eight thousand from the road bonds. Usually when you bond, we're all familiar with the first year, you pay interest, second year, you get hit with the whole nine yards capital return as well as the interest. So the thirty eight thousand that begins in twenty four, is that just the interest or will that be the the full amount of the loan in that year? In other words, it's going to get worse in twenty five, like it does in the school. And then the third question is, did I hear correctly that to catch up with our roads, it's thirty million dollars? That's how far behind we are in total. And remember, the roads are that has been worked out by the town and road agent. Thank you.
Let me try to go backwards, just because I think I can remember better. We're estimating for road rebuilding, we're about twenty million dollars behind. We've known for years that we were behind in not that hot, that bad, but probably in the ten to fifteen million dollar range and just prices have exploded and with supply chain issues and all since the pandemic. The thirty eight cents per thousand impact of the road bond that we're assuming that's a more or less a level impact over the ten years. About that, that amount, I think, maybe going down slightly as the valuation may go up. As far as where the merit pay increase is included, it's included. You are correct, within the line for Personnel Administration. And that line would also have things like fringe benefits. Thank you for the questions.
Thank you. There's a forty five dollar difference.
Come on up to the mic if you so are be counted here and members of the public.
This could be fair to you, I'm sorry. Then my question, the only reason I even asked it is because on the paper that we gave us, it shows the change is two hundred and five thousand. So there's a forty thousand dollar difference. So I was just curious why. And I don't doubt the hundred and sixty seven thousand, but I wondered why the paper that we have says that the proposed budget increase is two hundred and five thousand more and not a hundred and sixty seven thousand more. Just curious.
Oh, you probably misunderstood my response. It also includes increases in fringe benefits such as health insurance.
So the one sixty seven is the salary increase and then the two hundred that's shown here includes the salary plus the subsidy fringe or something else?
Yes.
The one sixty seven includes the salary increase, including all benefits. But also under Personnel Administration, there's health insurance, dental insurance, long term disability, some fighter unemployment. So there are other there are other line items within that larger budget. Certainly, the major change is the one sixty nine or
Sorry to be a test about this, but if if indeed, as you stated, that that is help wages and benefits, but I'm hearing from this gentleman very nicely that it was wages and benefits, but then it also includes dental, which is all wages and benefits. Also includes life insurance. So I would just ask that if Personal Administration covers all costs, wage benefits that are made available to our employees, but the line items show all that and then add up, and it makes sense. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. So Ken, Neil was up to you. Is it okay if you make a comment? So within the Personnel Administration budget, the first line item is merit pay increase, which indeed increases one hundred and sixty seven thousand. Also within that is all the insurance for all town employees, which doesn't increase because of merit wages. And there's an an increase there of thirty seven thousand seven hundred thirty nine dollars. And then there are smaller increases in all the other personnel items. So but they're not related to the merit increase. The entire merit increase amount is that one sixty seven. Maybe I'll kind of do one off of this. Ken, can you hear us?
Are you speaking to me, Mark?
Yeah, sorry. Maybe I better not speak to this. I just wanted to know if you wanted to offer anything else.
Um, no, I appreciate the comments. I appreciate Neil's assistance and I'll be glad to save my voice if I can.
Great. Anybody else in the public who wants to offer a question or comment on the town budget and road bond?
Good evening. I'm Tisha Lambert of Three O Five Delta. I know there was a mention regarding the roads and the bond that were behind, even behind Ken. For the group, can we just expand on why we're behind? And I guess the second question is, are we currently maintaining the roads at first? Where it's the cheapest, the first twenty five percent of life, twenty five percent of life where it's probably a dollar versus the four dollars when it's failing. So if you just expand it, we're doing that practice to maintain.
Sure, I'd have to say that for many, many years, it was the practice of the Select Board to try to keep tax rates affordable. The first thing that was caught was roads. As I had mentioned, about six, seven years ago, we started to try to attack that by increasing the the budget line item for for shimming, shimming and paving by five percent each year. We've continued that. We also went out for two separate road bonds during that period of time. And, you know, we realized that we were falling further and further behind. And this year, we said, well, let's bite the bullet and I'll see if the town will support the increase both on the shimming and paving side as well as on, you know, the road bond side. I'd like to think that the plan that we have now for shimming, paving, chip sealing and gravel replenishment will keep us current within, say, a five year period and the funding model we have now will work to do that. As far as the road bonds for rebuilding, and as I said, that's the elephant in the room, you know, could be twenty million dollars. We certainly can't afford that in in one one tranche or, you know, we're just going to try to pick away at it. I I I think that I, I, I think that Dan Blanchett has been doing an excellent job of trying to do what he can with the roads in the most, most cost effective manner. And I guess I'll leave it at that. But thank you for the question.
Thank you for that response. I think I understand the backlog and trying to keep the tax rate low. The second question was, I don't know that I said it correctly. And Dan does a great job. So he's been on the road and he's been very helpful. Is it the practice of the town to repair the roads in the first twenty percent of life? So give or take where it's the cheapest, is there a program that has that identified on what road shows are? And what work is being done?
Neil, if you could answer that, I think you have a lot more knowledge than I do of it.
Yes, the maintenance part, which we're probably about three million aside. You have a good plan and over the next four years, that will take care of. It's really, as I think, as you're saying, it's, it's much cheaper to maintain roads than to rebuild roads. And that's why sometimes you'll see we're working on a road and wow, that isn't as bad as the fine road. But we need to keep that because we can save it versus rebuilding it. So yes, I think the plan that we have and the funds we have allocated will maintain the roads. And as roads are built, they will be added to that maintenance to maintain them. So they shouldn't have to be done. They won't be done again when we do. But and this is a problem that you see almost every community, states, everywhere. Our roads, our infrastructure hasn't had, hasn't been maintained probably to the standard that ideally would be. What's the question? The question through comments? Okay. Great. Do you have another chance at the end of the public hearing? Something strikes you? Thank you, Ken. Much appreciated. We will now. To make sure, if you're on Zoom, anyone make a comment or ask a question, please use the listening function.
Okay, we're going to go next to the Kentucky Village precincts and.
Thank you. This should be shorter and proportionally less painful. This year, the Kentucky precinct is focusing basically on improving the water at the main facility in Bound Tree. Involve replacing the media, which is two very large vessels that the water all goes through and it takes out a lot of the bad elements. That water all comes down from our fifty acre pond that's actually located at Warner. Additional controls and equipment were upgraded to allow more off site control by, by our management, which is Sam Curry. He's our precinct. Every day that water is tested. So if you're in the precinct, you gotta feel pretty, pretty good that the, you're getting pure, good water without anything bad in it. This year, we've received a hundred thousand dollar grant to identify and document the entire system. There's pipes that have been in there for hundreds of years that certainly need to be repaired. But the whole system will be evaluated. And that'll allow the precinct commissioners to really understand what needs to be replaced in the next few years. And I'm sure that's going to be an extensive list. But like the other precincts that you're going to hear and have already heard, we had projected large increases in electricity costs just for a hundred and twenty four streetlights that we supply electricity to. That went up to three thousand dollars. And for the two tank locations, the electricity went up another twenty thousand. So it's small change compared to the budget you just heard, but for our budget, it's pretty significant. Our overall expenses are up about twenty eight thousand. And that's going to, we think, be offset by about twenty thousand dollars of more, more water usage. So that leaves us with about an eighty four hundred dollar increase in what we need to cover. And that'll be the, the tax increase. Like in the past years, the budget's based on trying to cover basically the operating costs by the water revenue. And then the other half of what we ask for each year is about two hundred and fifty six thousand dollars, which is going into a capital reserve fund to pay for the vehicle that we share with a, with a suicide on Hopkin and Town. And also just build up that, that kitty, if you will, for when we have to do a major, major repair, which we hope doesn't happen. But we also know coming down the road, especially with this study, that we'll probably need to spend in the millions for our new tank and a total new complex up on Bound Tree Road. So our total recommended appropriations are five hundred and twenty two thousand roughly. And that includes the operating budget of two hundred and sixty six and the warrants of two fifty six. The offsetting revenues are approximately two hundred and thirty four thousand, leaving two hundred and eighty eight thousand to be raised by taxes. The rate is going from one dollar and sixty seven to one dollar and seventy one, an increase of four cents. I think the past, we've basically kept it in that range. So, so far, we've been very lucky and hopefully it will continue. Any questions? Yes.
Hang on, Don. When have you said? Okay, Cheryl, you're going to come up and use the mic, please. I'm going to try to remember using the microphone.
Cheryl Moore, three ninety six Park Avenue. Maybe you mentioned it, but how much is in that capital reserve fund right now?
I didn't know. I mentioned it. It's about a billion and a half.
Okay, thank you very much.
Other questions or comments?
I can't wait to say, Lauren Thomas, is that eighty six Maple Street? Is that four cents increase to Tukook Village precinct taxpayers only or the whole town?
Just us lucky.
Thank you. Thank you.
Other questions or comments around? You've got a precinct budget. You're broken.
I broke it. I know.
You're broken.
So then.
Add that to the.
We'll add that to the.
That's not good.
Okay, great. Thank you, Don. Okay, Hopkin and Village precinct.
Hello, I'm Victoria Brand. I represent the Hopkin and Village precinct. My presentation will also be proportionally smaller moving forward and only affect the taxpayers in the precinct. We're looking at an overall increase in our operating budget of twenty three percent. And that is driven by electricity. Our electricity costs have actually gone up by twenty five percent because the streetlights are the main driver of the budget. We have a water board for the water district, which is a slightly different set of residences than the precinct. But we are responsible for their budget. And not, I shouldn't say that. We oversee the board. They meet separately and they make their decisions based on their needs, including raising rates to cover the, the cost of running the water operation. Due to a large infrastructure project for the water system, there will be a request made to the precinct voters at the annual meeting of a fifty thousand dollar bond to make sure that the water district has an appropriate amount in their fund balance for emergency situations. They have final bills coming in for the, we have final bills coming in for the water project. And they want to make sure that after those are covered, that they have a reasonable reserve. So we will be in the precinct budget aiming for an operating budget of twenty two thousand, three hundred and twenty four dollars. And six thousand, nine hundred of that will be coming from the unreserved fund balance with twenty two thousand, three hundred and twenty four to be raised by taxation. So the overall tax rate for the precinct is forty six cents per thousand. And I want to say thank you to Suzie, our treasurer, and to the commissioners.
Thank you, Victor.
Ian Tewksbury, Irish Hill Road. Is the study that you're having done for Kentucky and the piping linked at all to what Hopkin and precinct and the white piping that we have for our water system?
It's not.
Is there any plan to have our piping examined similar to what they're having?
I don't know if I understand that mirrors theirs. I do know that the commissioners have been talking about doing an audit of the fixtures in the system to make sure that the invoices are being appropriately applied for each house.
Makes sense. Going forward, if there are, you know, I, I don't think that Kentucky Village precinct and the Hopkin and Village precinct end up needing to work together very often. But it would seem that if one is applying for a grant, that the other one could also apply for it because they would both benefit, you know, from it as, you know. So that would seem to make sense going forward if there is that opportunity for both precincts to communicate, talk to each other and work together. That would make more sense because I, because I, I don't know how old Kentucky is compared to the Hopkin and Village water. But it would seem that they're probably both pretty old and that they need, you know, maintenance and upkeep. So thank you.
Thank you. Your point is well taken, and I will bring it back to the commissioners.
Lauren Thomas, eighty six Maple Street. Again, this question, I guess, applies to both precincts because it is a common ground. Both of you stated that streetlights seem to be a huge driver. I believe you said twenty five percent, and I'm not sure which number you gave, Don, but it was in that realm, maybe. So the question is, have streetlights been either looked at maybe turning off or retrofitted from metal halide to a more efficient LED lighting? And that could, I guess, either be collaborative or individually done.
You want to start?
I believe the streetlights are owned by Eversworth. But if John has more than that to. Sorry?
True.
Okay, so we could approach Eversworth. Suzie, our treasurer, is on contact with Eversworth, and that would be happy to smooth the situation down.
I just didn't want to yell across the room. That sounds like a great idea. I mean, they do energy audits on your house and help people become more efficient. So why not try, attempt to become more efficient for the both precincts? Any other comments on the Hopkin and Village precinct budget? And if you're on Zoom, put the raise hand. Okay, great. Thank you, Victor. Okay, so we're going to go to the school district operating budget and warrant articles. And it's going to be a two part presentation. Going to start with Norm Gupel, who is the school board's director of the budget committee. And he'll be followed by Jonathan Cohen, who is chair of the budget.
It's not broken. Thank you guys all for coming out tonight. Thank you to the budget committee for hosting this public hearing. Before I begin, I just wanted to say thank you to the board for their support in the budget and process and to our superintendent of schools and Michelle Clog for helping us with this budget. Before I begin with what I have to read, I just wanted to also say thank you to the leadership team for being here. Thank you for educating our students and to the taxpayers for supporting our students also. It's well appreciated. So my name is Norm Gupel, and I represent the Hopkin and School Board on the Budget Committee. I am here this evening to discuss the school board's budget timeline for FY twenty four budget. The school board started our budget and process in October with three main goals in mind. First, to maintain level programming, so our students and teachers have a consistent learning path. You can see this in our pathways to graduation. A move, a move to a true middle school model and revamped program of studies. Second, to maintain level staffing at all buildings, which include four teachers per grade K through six. Third, to reduce the surplus, also known as the fund balance. This meant, this meant budgeting for all needs like food services, facility maintenance costs that historically relied on the fund balance to cover. Relying on fund balance often meant freezing the budget as, as has been done for six years in a row. The budget and process has, has, has been discussed in public over the course of multiple meetings. In those meetings, we did our best to answer every question that has, has been, that's been asked from the community and from the budget committee. It has always been my goal to work with the budget committee and the whole community. I think it's a working relationship that is strong between all. This year, the school board found the district faced with unusual high costs, including fuel costs due to inflation. We also had to incorporate additional salary and benefits such as HEA and Hess contracts. I should note that both of those contracts passed last year at the annual school district meeting, meeting with full support from the community. In January, we sent our original proposed budget of twenty four million, eight hundred and ninety two thousand, nine hundred and twenty four to the budget, budget committee. Our initial budget was supported by the school board five oh. After numerous discussions and questions from the budget committee and community, after the initial presentation, we listened to their feedback and thought process with the understanding that a reduced budget would be preferred. The school board then shared an amended budget with a reduction. The reduction included two S R funded positions. Because of, because of the use of S R funds, positions had to be tied to a specific job within the schools and could not be broad. So we could not say one interventionalist and one elementary teacher. We had to be specific. So the, so the reductions eliminated a fourth grade teacher S R position and a math interventionalist specialist, specialist S R position. It also moved a school, a, a school psychiatrist from partially S R funded to fully S R funded. This reduction was supported by the board four one. The school board also reduced the maintenance trust from two hundred and seventy five thousand to two hundred, two hundred K, again, with a vote of four to one. After the school board's presentation on the reduced budget, the budget committee voted seven to two with one abstain to support the school budget, to one abstain to support the school board's original budget. At our, at our school board meeting last night, the board conveyed a strong consensus and once again supporting our original, our original budget number of twenty four million, eight hundred and ninety two thousand, nine hundred and twenty four. The school board will vote on the budget committee's final number tomorrow night. Both the budget committee's vote and the school board's vote will appear on the warrant at the annual school district meeting. I will now turn on, turn it over to Jonathan Cohen.
Okay. I'm not going to get feedback over here. So Jonathan Cohen, I am here to talk to you just briefly about sort of how the budget committee has come to where we are. And let me just start out, we've had a lot of people. Um, and let me just start out, we've had a lot of people thanking a lot of different people. I would like to thank all of you for coming here and participating, including you on Zoom. So, um, I'm going to go over a little bit, uh, of what Norm just talked about. So, uh, I have a very brief slide here just to talk about this. So January eleventh, uh, the school board brought the initial numbers to the budget committee. This is the twenty-four million, eight ninety-two, nine twenty-four, and the maintenance trust of two hundred and seventy-five thousand. They voted for those numbers after working all year. They had been talking to us all year about it and brought us those numbers. Uh, we then discussed those numbers at a budget committee meeting that was soon after that. And, um, there were some questions. There are always questions of the budget committee about these numbers and how they make sense and what they mean and how they arrived at it. And the budget committee didn't vote to say, we're going to accept these numbers. We're not going to accept these numbers into our budget, but we did have some questions and took sort of a little straw poll as to where people were at. And there were some questions, you know, based on concerns about, um, all the financial stresses that folks are under, all the rates, the fixed costs that are going up. The school board then met again and voted as Norm talked about to reduce to twenty-four million, seven fifteen, two ninety-one and two hundred thousand. So the difference would be essentially a reduction of a hundred and seventy-seven thousand, six thirty-three, and a reduction of seventy-five thousand to the trust fund. Now, if you could just pop up the next piece of this. So then those numbers came back to the budget committee. And we had asked what the impacts would be, and it's Norm just sort of talked about. We were told this would involve the elimination of a math interventionalist, the elimination of a fourth grade teacher, and then this psychologist impact. The budget committee, uh, after hearing public comment, significant public comment in an epic meeting, then voted, uh, essentially for the original numbers. There was a lot of concern about the impacts of these reductions. And the budget committee, uh, voted seven to two with the norm of staying because at that point, the school board had not, I guess, uh, told him which way the board would, would go on that. He was not in a position at that meeting to vote. So it was seven to two for the original and then, uh, nine to one for the original maintenance trust fund. I'm sorry, for the reduced maintenance trust fund. And so that's when we stood. Uh, then there was a, a school board meeting last night. I went there. I've seen some of you there. And the school board then discussed these numbers. And they didn't take an official vote again to change the number again. But they took, I guess, a, a sort of a, like we did, like a where are you leaning kind of vote. And that was four to one to go back to the original numbers. The twenty-four million, eight ninety-two, nine twenty-four, and, uh, then the two hundred thousand, I think. I think I'm not speaking on that, on the maintenance trust. And so here we are today. And, um, I, being a member of the board, had asked the school board, well, why not just take the vote and just move the number back since that's where it sounds like you are? Uh, they elected not to do that last night. Uh, but they did, my understanding is now Norm is able to make a vote tonight with the board behind him for the, that original number. So that, I think, if I'm missing something, puts us where we are tonight. Better? Yeah.
Okay, um, so thank you, Norm. And let us go ahead and, and hang me back. Um, why don't I go ahead and invite, look, any questions on the proposed school operating budget and that the budget committee was recommending? And also the proposed maintenance trust fund.
Good evening, everyone. Jay Bordeus, Hopkins Green Road. Uh, I just got through that epic meeting two weeks ago. And, uh, again, thank you for all your work on this. I know some of it can seem thankless, but, uh, but this work does make a big difference for the community, so I appreciate what you do. Uh, in sitting through that, that meeting two weeks ago, we heard from parents of students in the fourth grade who were concerned about the loss of the teacher funded by the Esser money. And we've also heard from members of the community who realize that the impact that, that this budget will have on their, on their pocketbooks. It's understandable. But what we really didn't hear in detail is the impact that, uh, the, the cuts to the maintenance trust fund will have to the ongoing maintenance of the school facilities. And, uh, I guess that's why I'm standing up here tonight. Uh, as part of the building project that we were part of a few years ago, we heard from the community, including many people at this table, about the huge backlog of deferred maintenance. And we also heard loud and clear from the community that we needed to develop a really strong capital improvement plan. And, uh, to my satisfaction, that's been done. Thanks to the superintendent, his team, facility manager Jim Rosacki, and Bob Nader, who worked on the CIP. The district does have a really good capital improvement plan now. It's thoughtful, it's thorough, and it'll carry the district well going forward into many, many years forward. So, uh, congratulations on that work. However, um, as we begin to look at this work that needs to be done, and it's, and it's in very good detail on the website. So I encourage anybody that hasn't seen that, take a look at the website. We're already starting to cut into that by not making the full contribution, the full two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to the trust fund. And I, I believe that's a mistake. Uh, I understand the pressure that we're all under, and I, I certainly appreciate that as a taxpayer. But as somebody that, that dwells in the world of facilities management, I, I think I need to point out that when we look at what, um, most organizations look at for capital renewal, it's about a two percent of the, the rebuilt cost of the facility. So it, using your imagination, as you can see, over fifty-year pro, uh, year period, all of the, the building elements will be either replaced or substantially maintained. If we look at this, this two hundred thousand dollar number, that's like a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar, a two hundred, a two hundred year, two hundred and fifty year cycle. So it's kind of like you walking down into the north end, looking at Paul LeVier's house and saying, boy, you could use a new roof here. Because it's been two hundred and fifty years. That's the rate in which we're replacing our school, business, school district buildings. And that's something that we all, everybody in the town has our ownership share of those buildings. Um, this, it's over, it's about seventy-five billion dollars worth of rebuild cost. It's a huge asset that we own collectively as taxpayers, and we need to maintain it. Um, one of the things that came up in the, in, in, I've seen over the years in the, in the different budget processes is that we're, we feel like we're putting the, the students against the buildings. Resources are tight, and a lot of this work that we, we need to do is very expensive. And I understand that, but to me, we're, we're not looking at two constituents here. We're really looking at one. Because probably even buildings go together. And if the buildings don't support what the educators are trying to do, to some extent, it's for naught. So beyond the obligation that we owe to the taxpayers, we only build buildings and fund them. Um, I think we, we do owe an obligation to the student to make sure, and the educators and everybody that works in these buildings, to make sure that we, we thoroughly fund the CIP. Um, you know, we heard from the, we heard from the parents, we heard from the taxpayers. Um, I guess tonight I'm speaking for the buildings. And the buildings are saying, we need you to do the CIP, we need you to do the CIP. So, uh, thank you, Jonathan, for your, your no vote. Um, I understand it was because of this. So I encourage all to revisit the cut that was made or was suggested and discussed last meeting and going forward fully fund this CIP. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Uh, Ian Tewksbury, Irish Hill Road. Um, I have to agree. We have an op- you guys have an opportunity to look into the future today. I think if we went back ten years ago and the town council, or the, when the select board was saying, you know, we really need to keep as much of a flat line budget as we can. We really need to control increase. And so we're going to, you know, we got to cut the roads. We got to cut the roads. Well, here we are with a two million dollar bond, and that's not, that's going to take ten percent of the roads. You know, we really need the twenty million dollar bond. I'm not suggesting a twenty million dollar bond, but we, you know, if we cut the seventy-five this year and next year and the year after, ten years ago, ten years from now, we're going to be looking at a, you know, a twenty million dollar bond just to catch up because we let ourselves get behind like we did with the roads. I'd like to see that we don't do that with the, with the school, you know, maintenance program. Thank you.
Thank you. Other comments?
Stack, I'm hurt. Take this one. Oh, we got, we got it up there. I got it here. So, you know, just pull it back up there. It's fine.
Just didn't want you to drop it when you just.
No, I didn't want to make a scene here. I am now.
All good.
Hey, come on, baby. Okay.
Okay, thanks for hearing us. So we're here. Here we go. I'm on stage. Lauren Clement, eighty-six Maple Street. Um, I guess since we just heard about CIP, I want to speak a little bit to that, and then we'll jump back to the budget. I, I, I've sat through, I think, every school board meeting and been to many of the budget meetings. Um, I did quite a few last year and starting with the work session. So starting to gain some knowledge about how this whole process happens. And that's, uh, it's helpful understanding as a taxpayer and a parent. So I fall in the middle. I'm not, you know, we, we heard about stakeholders and parents, I'm in the middle. And I care about buildings, uh, because I too deal with facilities. In the last year, not necessarily our fiscal year, um, we had a return to capital improvements from the bond. A bond return of about four hundred and three thousand, four hundred and eight thousand. Um, and we are allocating that to future projects that haven't been done yet. So to me, that is a bonus for us. Um, it's going into our capital CIP. On April twelfth, we put, um, we had to make, a- apparently at the end of the year, we have to always put in, uh, this year, or last year was forty thousand into the performance contract. So that comes out of the CIP. So we do have to manage that on top of capital improvements until that contract expires, and it's quite a ways out. Um, last year, we replaced an oven, a dishwasher replacement for eighteen thousand, an RTU replacement for twelve thousand and change, a total being seventy-eight thousand dollars. On April twelfth, there was a public hearing, since I printed them all off. I guess that's in regards to the bond remainder. Um, with the bond remainder, the district originally voted to use those funds to replace a oil burner at Harold Martin School for the tune of fifty-seven thousand dollars and a hundred and nineteen thousand in flooring. And somewhere in the mix, that funding, and I have your Hopkinton Budget Committee meeting minutes, nine fourteen, twenty twenty-two. And Norm stated that this is now being funded by the general fund and not the bond. So I'm not sure exactly where that came out of, somehow out of our fund balance, but a general fund, that's what it says. It, it went through. Um, so we continue on. On uh, September twentieth, twenty twenty-two, thirty thousand dollars was allocated into the SAU exterior office. And a fund of the Esser fund, there was a decision on the Esser funds. I'm not sure if that was directed to buildings. October eleventh, twenty twenty-two, we had a sewer system issue, fifteen thousand dollars put towards, um, septic repair, additional CIP. Last night, there was a public hearing, which I thought was a little preemptive, being that we haven't allocated what our CIP funds are yet this year. But yet the school board held it yesterday, and I don't exactly know why. And I'm going to read down this whole list of funds that they used for a total of a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars when we're looking at funding our CIP with two hundred thousand and knowing our, uh, payment of forty thousand plus for the performance contract is already on the books. So, um, let me go. Walk-in replacement, Harold Martin School, not to exceed twenty-one thousand dollars. Walk-in replacement, Hopkinton Middle High School, not to exceed nineteen thousand dollars. Mini AC split replacement, HMS server room, not to exceed nine thousand dollars. Mini AC split replacement, MSS server room, not to exceed nine thousand dollars. HMS MPR floor refinishing, twenty-four thousand dollars. MSS cafeteria chairs that I believe we were sitting on last night, not to exceed six thousand dollars. HMHS classroom furnishings, not to exceed five thousand dollars. Mechanical engineering for future HU, not to exceed twenty-four thousand dollars for a grand total of a hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. I asked what the, yep.
Ask you to kind of drive it home to whatever the comment is that you want the budget committee to consider tonight for, for a question. I appreciate your information. I'm also just mindful of the one in the room and I'm watching the clock, so.
I will reel it in. Bringing it in for a landing. The, um, point of the matter is, we have not been neglectful in the last year of investing in our CIP. We've, we've got a list here. There's, there was another RFT that is on the books. So we are not being neglectful of our CIP. In fact, we've already spent what we've allocated. And I think where we're going to run into trouble is not funding a special ed fund. So the other night, last night, at the school board meeting, the one statement, and I lost my paper, that stuck to me was that a board goal is to, bear with me. Is to stabilize the tax rate. And Jim stated that last night that we, he felt that we struck out with this goal, with this budget. There's plenty more, but I'm going to stop.
Further questions, comments?
As to this, right? Um, Cheryl Moore's three ninety-six Park Avenue. I wasn't able to make the meeting last week. No one's fault but my own. Uh, and I'd like to speak to the, the wisdom of the school board's decision initially to, um, cut the two positions that were funded by Esser funds. I come from Henneker, forty-five years, and member of school board and negotiator and lots of things. Um, I've had to fight it just like you have, and, and I understand it to a degree. It's changed a lot. There's no doubt about it. But I do know with the Esser funds that those were federal funds that were sent to us with strings, I'm sure, but to be used in the wisest decision of the school board and superintendent's office, which they did do. Uh, the positions that they chose were temporary positions. They were advertised as that. They were hired as that. There was nothing personal, one way or the other. They were advertised as that. They were hired as that. There was nothing personal, one way or the other. Anyone that took those positions knew exactly what the results would be. They were obviously to meet a need for that particular time. We were going through COVID and everything was moving and changing. But the fourth grades don't stay the same. The fourth grades don't stay stagnant. And neither does the shift from this school to the other school stay the same. And there's even one more thing to consider and we're all desperately wanting to know what impact COVID had on the kids for those three years and the numbers don't look good. But we had in so many ways, but we had a successful year as far as the last year gone last year. So one thing that may possibly show some information to the school board and to the superintendent, and I would assume this is what they're going to be, would have been looking at had they followed through on that, was what the impact, what the change was in the success rate of the third grade that moved into the fourth grade. From the fourth grade last year, moved into the fifth grade and then with the success rate was the third grade coming in, who would be facing that fourth grade position? Now, having said that, that's the first consideration, but the other thing to consider is having worked on school boards, that I know that you do not, school boards, town officers, you are not tied specifically to how those funds are used within a category. And they have to have that parameters to make those choices. And at the school board meeting some time ago, we were told that the math specialist would perhaps be eliminated, but it would be switched and the emphasis would be changed to three reading specialists and one math specialist rather than two and two. So they were already looking at an adjustment that was of value to their students. That wasn't made of financial reason at all. That was of value. So I very much trusted what they were saying when they came back and said that they were, that they would eliminate the fourth grade position. And I don't know that it's eliminating the fourth grade position so much as eliminating the funding for a position for which we have been told by our superintendent and more that we are definitely a school of not things, of people. And if you move a temporary position to permanent, you have a permanent piece of the package. I assumed that they saw an opening in which it could be shifted, which we've done so many times over the years in this school district and every school district around. There's reduction in force going on all around us. I think we did increase by 15 kids last year, which is a small number for us. I believe that was the estimate I heard at the school meeting. But there were some just adjustments being made. They had to put a label on it and they labeled it the two roles that were paid for by ESER funds because they were temporary positions. And I don't believe that the school board or the superintendent would have recommended either of those if they hadn't felt in their heart of hearts that that wasn't going to still make the best choices possible for our children. I believe that is the tax rate supposedly on that original proposal before the cuts going to be 763,000? Is that what it was? Does anybody have that figure? The original increase of, the increase of the school budget as proposed prior to those cuts.
$83,000. The original operating budget. Had $83,000 and the original maintenance trust fund had 35 cents.
Okay. So had those two positions been cut, I believe it's 22 cents?
It was a reduction to $1.61 on the operating budget, which is 22 cents.
Okay. So if it's $1.83 down to $1.61, correct? That 22 cents is worth about 90, 900, excuse me, $90 on a $300,000 house. Was my quick math. And so if that 22 cents was that, and yet you've got five, six times that left. So that's, I won't do the math here, but I'm saying it was at least a one, perhaps one-fifth reduction to the taxpayers on a really expensive year. And we have a bond and we have a teacher's contract that are going to keep us still very high next year. So I would urge you to trust in the wisdom of this board, not to try to second guess them. Would they like to keep every position that they need possibly? But all of us are here to be fair to everybody, to our children, to our taxpayers, to our community, and to do the best balance that we can. And it's not an emotional issue. It gets to be that way, but it needs to be looked at as factually as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much. My name is Devin Chafee. I live at 483 Briar Hill Road. And I just want to thank you all for your extensive work on this budget. I also want to thank a number of the school board members who are in the room here tonight. I really do appreciate this committee's real deep consideration of the school budget, especially at the last hearing, which, which was, as has been described here tonight, quite epic in its discussion from many different community members. I know I certainly learned a lot in the five hours that we spent in this room together and I really appreciated getting to hear not only from many community, fellow community members, as well as from the school administration on a number of the issues that were discussed. A couple of the takeaways, the largest takeaways for me from that meeting were, one in particular, that there's just kids who are currently in school and who are coming into school simply have higher needs than they have in the past. And I, I think that the folks from the staff from the school did a wonderful job of describing the, the, the difficulty that kids who are isolated during their formative years because of COVID are now having in a school setting that they may not have had, say, three or four or five years ago and the increased needs that they have in the schools. The other main takeaway that I had was that there is no fat in the school budget that you all voted in favor of last week. I think Principal Brown might have said, you know, there, there is no crayon budget is how she described it. That any decision that's made to cut significantly at this budget is simply going to have an impact on students, which I think this board recognized when it took its vote last week. And I appreciate that the task of coming up with a budget that is really going to make sure that these kids get the supports that they need and that is also sustainable, is an incredibly difficult task. And I really appreciate the work and effort that both, again, this committee and the school board has put into that. And so I very much appreciated the, the budget committee's approval of the restoration of the teacher regardless of which grade that teacher may be in. You know, certainly going into the, the, the fourth grade, whether it be a fourth grade teacher or at another grade level, certainly it's going to have an impact on, on class size regardless, as well as the interventionist, which I think is such a key position, especially for those students who are struggling because of isolation due to COVID during their formative years. And I want to appreciate the fact that this board has, has taken a position in favor of restoration of those positions, which were in fact in the original budget that was proposed to this committee by the school board and which the school board last night at, at a meeting that I was also honored to attend and where I continued to learn more, stated that it is going to support and has consensus to support going forward. And so I simply urge you to please maintain the, those two positions in the operate here. I'm speaking obviously of the operating budget in line with the, with the vote that the budget committee took last week. And thank you so much for this opportunity. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much for your comments. Before we go on to any more comments, I just wanted to take a second to again invite people who are on Zoom. If you want to offer any comments or questions, use the raise hand function. And then also, which now we did receive, the budget committee received three emails over the past few days from members of the community and they've been made available as of this afternoon to everyone in the budget committee, but just in case people haven't had a chance to look at them, I'm not going to read them in detail, but I do want to summarize them. We, we had three emails that expressed support for the budget committee's recommendation of the original school operating budget. Those came from Ian Harden, Nicola Rock, 1264 Hattie Old Road. Emily Assamton White, 364 Park Avenue and Bill Donlap, 64 Watchtower Road. And offering many of the reasons that have been articulated, that were articulated in January 25th and also this evening. And then one of the emails also asked the budget committee to the store, the maintenance trust fund to $275,000. That was for Emily Assamton White, 64 Park Avenue. And expressing the importance of investing in facilities and infrastructure. Okay, Candy, we are gonna bring you on from Zoom and I think you should unmute yourself.
Oh, I'm glad I'm not being seen tonight. Candy Garvin, 515 Bounty Road. I too appreciate all the work that you do. And I know that you appreciate the work that the taxpayers do when we have to pay our taxes. So that being said, our tax rate is going to go up for the town. They have held their budget for many years and the school budget has gone up every year and it's always for the children. I have grandchildren. I am a school nurse. I, I know this business. But it's not sustainable, guys. It's not sustainable. I thank Lauren Clement for letting, going to all those meetings that most of us can't go to. And most of us who are alike thinkers about, do I say something and, and complain about the tax rate? Do I do that and still stay in the same town? Can I have a eye contact with people who are raising their children and expect and want the best education for them? That's really what we're talking about. This is a town. It's not just for the children. It's not just for the parents. It's not just for the educators. It's all of us together. But what we hear is hard choices need to be made. Yes, they do. So please make some. Make some hard choices that benefit the whole town. Please do that. I implore you to do that because so many of us, your taxpayers, want to support you, but financially we cannot keep up with the needs and the wants. And you say there are no wants. There are wants in there. We had an overage. It was spent and now there are things that come up with. I don't want to go backwards. I know what the roads have been like. The town has said, oh, we're not going to do it for so many years because our tax rate on the other side is going up. And I appreciate that with the board of selectmen and the budget committees. But please, listen to people who aren't talking to you, if that makes any sense, because there are more of us out there and we don't want to get emotional about it. It's, it's just business with a lot of emotion in back of us. We are people. I do thank you. I thank those of you who are sitting there while I'm comfy in my living room and nice and warm. I appreciate Neil and him going to those meetings. I really do. Thank you very much and I'm sorry to be such a sourpuss. Take care.
Thank you, Jenny. A quick, a quick comment to say that I hope that anybody who has sentiments about any of the budgets tonight feels safe in communicating your perspectives to us. I know that at the budget committee, we listen and we value those perspectives. And so I just would encourage you to have the courage to speak up and I will do my best and I really will to make you feel safe.
All right. Bob Mattio, 108 Park Ave. I guess I can start with a, a question. One of the concerns I have going forward, and it may be, this could be up for discussion. I mentioned at one of the meetings, some of the bigger things that were going to come up specifically with the school budget. And I would like to be corrected on this if I'm wrong, if we can do this now, Norm, or, or someone. With the, the proposal or there's, it, it looks like we're under maybe some future requirements to rebuild the hallways or the entrance ways to the high school and Harold Martin. And there's been some discussion around that and some seven-figure numbers around that. Is that? Is that not true or is that partially true? Or is that, is that misinformation? I guess is what I'm getting.
That's misinformation. I've not heard that.
So there hasn't, and I guess what I'm not trying to pin anyone down on that, right? So I, it's just is, do we know this? And, and there's been discussion in the town about redoing those hallway, I say hallways, it's not hallways. The entrance ways and possibly some external requirements that are coming to do that.
Are you talking about Harold Martin?
It may be Harold, maybe it's the high school. So I'm getting this information secondhand from town, from people in the town. I have not heard that, but it's come up with several people that we may be under requirements, future, I was gonna say ICE or New England, wrong. Wrong brain. That you may be under some federal or some state requirements to change that.
Superintendent Plan is here.
So I think you're alluding to the safety plan, the board goal set at the beginning of the year. And what the board wanted to do was to do an audit or evaluation of all three campuses. And in that process, Mr. Rosicky and myself, Homeland Security team out completed audits. They gave nothing but recommendations, no requirements, no nows. It was identifiers as as you move forward. Here are things that you can. So that package and that list was put together. The board discussed it. And then last week, Mr. O'Brien, Mr. Google, Mr. Rosicky, this week actually, it was Monday, Kip had met to talk about prioritizing the list. And as of right now, they talked about, there's going to be another meeting, maybe shifting some to a CIP plan, some shifting to surplus if there's any, but nothing that is required to be done immediately or in the.
Good. So I think that kind of makes sense with what I was kind of hearing, the, the limited pieces I was hearing in the town. That actually sounds like they're, so you know, there's mu- much better from the superintendent. Really, just for me then going forward, I think, I guess it's really a, you know, a philosophical difference. I'm, I'm, I'm very concerned. And I, I know that concern isn't lost with everyone here. And I'm not, so I don't suggest that it, it is. And I did say this, so I am going to repeat myself in, in the last meeting, talking to people in the town directly. There are concerns that we've come to the point where, as Candy said, this is not sustainable, but there are people that are not here in this room that are very afraid of what's coming. And so that, and that includes people with fixed incomes and people with children and the financial impact of them. And some of them have already left the town because of that. And I think at times that gets lost. As a taxpayer and, and a parent, there is an impact, a financial impact that can happen or that will happen to some of the children that will be affected by this. And that's not to say that not, I'm not insinuating that not everyone can afford that. Whether they can is maybe another discussion we're not going to get to or isn't appropriate here. But I'm also concerned of what, like I said, what's coming, external factors are not going to be where we are now when these things continue to hit. And I do think there's a, I think sometimes, I think there's some time, there's some, there's a thought process that says if this, if we spend this money, the quality of. the quality of education will go up. And when you look at the studies around the country, that it's not always the case. And more often times, it's not the case. And that's, that's separate from a safety issue. I'm concerned with some of the long term, you know, we mentioned people voting on this in the past. I'm not sure the benefit packages, you know, the outlay for medical needs to be where the rest of the public is. You know, for my taste, it doesn't seem sustainable for a town that doesn't have the businesses to support that. Again, this is my thought. This is, I know this is philosophical, but.
If you don't mind, I'm just gonna sit on what we have in front of us tonight, not the medic. Because that was part of the
Right.
Package was approved by the orders last year.
So I would just ask if anyone still feels to to not support this or if they're if they have those concerns to voice them tonight. And thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you speaking up.
Sorry, you're gonna have to. Good evening. My name is Steve Ready, two sixty Kirssar Avenue. Grew up and graduated from Hopkinen Schools at three seventy one Maple Street. And also pay taxes for an elderly relative at three ninety two Maple Street. At the end of a three year term on the Budget Committee and a couple of years studying the budget before that, it occurs to me that often there's not a lot of historical perspective. The thing about our schools in Hopkinen is that they are expensive by historical accident and by design. At the end of the nineteen fifties, our town voted for a single district high school. We are one of the few towns in the whole state that has a high school like that. Also because of the unique history of our town with three villages in one township, we support two elementary schools where most towns support one elementary school building. And the thing with Hopkinen is the, you have to understand the history to understand where we are today. The second point is schools run on money. Teachers, they're great. We have a great teaching staff. The support of the community is great. The participation is great, but schools ultimately run on money. Having studied the budgets on the Budget Committee the last three years and then two years before that, getting involved in the process, there is no slush fund. There is no pot of gold. There's not a lot of extra money. And due to the nature of the budgets, when we start talking about cutting the budget, we talk about cutting personnel because that is the largest component of the school budget, as we all know. And that was illustrated by the fact that when we sent Norman back to the school board and said, is there any more money that can be cut from this budget? The answer was yes, and here, here it is. And it's an impact on the elementary school students of our town. The fact is that Hopkinen has less property per capita to support its schools than most other towns. The last time I looked at the number, the average town in the state had a million dollars per student. Hopkinen was somewhere between seven hundred and eight hundred thousand dollars per student. Historically, we have dug into our pockets to support the school system, which has given Hopkins in the reputation for having the school systems that people actually move here for. The teachers come here to start their career and to end their career. And it supports the property value of the houses in Hopkinen. As one of the comments that we received by email, the the school is great as is for the community and the children of the community, it's also great for every homeowner and every property owner in the community because the school props up those values. And I just end by saying that every year we look at this, and this year we did not get it on the budget, but every year we look at it, we spend per student in the middle of the range for the state of New Hampshire. Yet consistently, our students and our school is ranked at the top of the range. When you're getting excellent results for average costs, that's telling you something and thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you. Meredith Hatfield, sixty eight Apple Tree Lane. I had a comment and then a couple of questions from the packet that is online. And my comment is paying ten thousand dollars a year in property taxes on a three hundred thousand dollar house is really hard. So I just wanted to make that comment. My questions relate to the state aid. And on page three of the presentation, this is the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four budget information that is on the school board's website. On page three, there's a reference to at the top, it says total twenty twenty two, twenty twenty three revenue. And then it, there's a, it says major increases and major decreases. And on one, one question I had is under, under major increases, the dates are twenty twenty three to twenty twenty four. And then under major decreases, it's twenty twenty two to twenty twenty three. So I just don't understand time period differences. And then my other question is state adequacy aid is down fifteen point six five percent or two hundred and twenty four thousand, five hundred two dollars. And other state aid is down a hundred and eighty seven point zero one percent or eight thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars. So I was wondering if someone could speak to, if we know why those are down. And if there's anything we can do about that. Thank you.
I have a fantastic idea that's here that can help us with.
Thank you for the questions. Actually, thank you for catching a title. Made it through lots of people, so we'll fix that. It's should be twenty twenty three, twenty twenty one for the major decreases as well. So state adequacy, we're given a number by the Department of Ed. And it's based on our average daily membership or what some people refer with the ADM. You might hear ADM. So it's not just population. It's how often do those kids come to school? It also is differentiated by free and reduced, which probably you might have heard in the news or whatever, because of COVID, there is less of people either applying, probably definitely not that they're not qualified, but just getting them to apply because last year was free, so no one had to apply. That makes a difference. It's also got to do with identified children as well as third grade reading. These are all adjustments that go off of that. So the state gives all school districts in the state a number, I believe it's around November fifteenth. And so that's the number we get from them that we have to use. As far as other state aid, so what happened was when we went to set our tax rate for this year, we were told that there was eight hundred, eight thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars that was unused grant money that we had to put on our revenue sheet. And so we're not getting it next year. It was like a one time thing. It's kind of like probably people have seen in the paper or heard even about state property tax, right? So what happened was a couple of years ago legislators were trying to help things out with actually decreasing, you know, what people have to pay for state property tax. Well, now the piper's here and unfortunately, it's got to go back the other way. So I hope that answers your questions. Grab that mic back.
Thank you, Michelle. Thanks for the questions. Thank you, Michelle. Other questions or comments, come on up.
You know, we can just turn the mic towards you. Please do.
Um, hello, Elizabeth Sides, two sixty five Prowl Road. Steve, you said almost everything that I was about to get up and say, so thank you. I think that a couple meetings ago, Rob, or maybe it was at a school board meeting, I don't remember, I feel like it was here, that he made some historical points as well of, you know, it was decided, I think you said in the fifties, that they were going to have two schools, two elementary schools to support in this tiny town. That's a decision that we are paying for now. I think in the sixties or seventies, a school board had an opportunity to merge with another town around us, and that was voted down. And some of those people still live here. So we are paying for that now. I, I think that, you know, we, we don't pay sales tax or income tax. How else are we supposed to pay for schools? When we are about the last, I think, of fifty states or pretty close to getting state funding for public education? How else are we supposed to fund our schools? They cost money. Yes, they do. Bunches go up every year. That's the way the world works. I don't like it. No one likes it. How are we supposed to pay for our schools? We don't have fat. Everyone knows that. It's not a private school. We don't want it to be a private school. A gentleman before, in the last meeting, said, send your kids to private school if you want a great school system. No, that's not fair to me. That's not fair to anyone who lives here. We deserve a great school district, a great education. We have that. I'm going to say what I said last time. This town, I've lived here for eleven years. They create wonderful kids. They babysit for me. And I'm really picky. They teach my kids sports. I teach their kids sports in terms of some people who grew up here are now having kids that are my age. I teach their kids. They're really nice people here. We have great, great teachers, great staff. I think in a time of post COVID, at least for a while, cutting teachers is not the way to go. It's just not. I'm going to say it about what I said last time about Patrice Brown. She told you that the kids that are coming into this school, pre K kindergarten, have different needs. They have more needs. Different means they need more help. Cutting teachers hurts that, however way you want to splice it. And to Candy's point, I can, Candy, I love you. Everyone who is feels different than differently than me and a lot of people in this room, we're all civil. I get it. We all understand where everyone is. So I appreciate all the work that you do. I know it's hard. School board, thank you. I know it's hard. That's it.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Alyssa, can you bring her over on Zoom? She'll be able to talk now.
Hey, guys, can you hear me?
Yes.
If there's a faint like buzzing noise in the background, I'm sorry, Luke has power tools. I can't stop him. Thank y'all for letting me join you. This is Alyssa McCann, five one nine Prowl Road, Hopkinton. Oh, hi, neighbor. What you were just saying about kids entering Carole Martin who have additional needs. I have a three year old that entered in January who has additional needs that this school district is going above and beyond is not the word because it's not above and beyond. It's just humane that they are supporting us and our family in meeting his needs that are incredibly unique and incredibly challenging coming out of COVID. And at the same time, yes, our tax rate sucks. So I'm not going to pretend that paying this bill is fun. But it brings me back to what's happening in our medical system right now, where you see pediatric care being cut across the board because it's not profitable. And you see kids across the country suffering. And I know that may seem abstract to folks. But public education is as important as medical care. And we are so lucky to live in a town where our kids get the care that they need. And yes, it is expensive. But that doesn't mean they don't deserve it any less. And so, yeah, I'm going to have to change some of my shopping habits. I'm going to have to choose things differently in order to afford to be here. And yet I appreciate everyone who sticks around, who along with me read budgets. And if there is another way forward, if there is a grand plan that we as a town can come up with long term to solve this, I had no idea about these choices made, you know, a century ago. Let's make new choices, but those choices are not going to be short term solutions. They're not going to fix next year. And so if there is a path to make long term changes that serve our kids and serve our town, I'm happy to hear about how to do that. And in the meantime, that doesn't mean that we should nickel and dime the kids. But it does mean that we should figure out how as a town to rethink the way we're doing things to reduce costs. So all that to say, thank you for all the work you're doing. I know this is so hard, everyone. And as someone who has a kid just entering the system, just like, thank you. Thank you so, so much because I literally do not know what we'd be doing without the support of Ms. Beckwith and Ms. McGann and Ms. Bailey and everyone at Herald Martin right now. So that's all I got, guys. Thanks for hearing me out. Sorry, I'm not there in person, but y'all rock for being there.
Thank you, Alyssa. Other comments and questions?
Hi, everybody. I'm Sarah Maxon, Dustin, five seventeen Dustin Road. Thanks for your time tonight. And thanks to all of the speakers. It's it's not easy to come up here and speak no matter what you think the Budget Committee ought to do because all of this affects all of us very personally, whether we have kids in school or we're worried about how we're going to pay our next tax bills. It's personal for all of us. And I, on the school budget, the major drivers this year are the bond, which the community voted by that super majority that we need in order to approve a bond. We voted for that. We have to pay for it now. We voted for two new contracts last year by very substantial majorities. We have to pay for them now. And we are suffering the same inflationary pressures that every consumer and every government is facing in the country and and all over the world. And the school board has brought in a budget, for example, that is less than the social security cost of living adjustment for this year, which is they're both high numbers. But this is not an example of of anything close to reckless spending. The school board has said that they're committed to a discussion about class sizes. Let's face it, there is only one way to do this, right? It's by growing class sizes and reducing staff or other kinds of programming. There is no other magic bullet until the state solves its approach to school funding. I would hope that we would allow that process to play out and not say that in this particular year where we are hit by three unusual factors, the bond, the contracts and inflation, that this would be the year to make that decision without some robust study by the school district and community engagement around what are we willing to tolerate for class sizes? Maybe, maybe class sizes do need to go up, but it feels very haphazard to me that for the purpose of saving two hundred and fifty thousand dollars this year, that we would make a decision about class sizes based on that amount of money. So thank you all very much.
Thank you, Sarah.
Hey, Cheryl Brown, thirty-four, Whitetail Run. I'm a terrible public speaker, so I'm going to keep this short and sweet. Um, but I want to express that I'm in favor of the original budget and in restoration of a teacher and interventionist. Uh, we live in a great town and community, so thank you.
Thank you so much. Further comments? Ms. Norm? Okay, great. Um, thank you, Norm and Jonathan and to all who shared comments. So before we close the public hearing, um, I just want to re-invite members of all of you if you have any further comments or questions about any baskets of any of the budgets you've heard tonight. Just something on the town, on road bonds, you want to say? Now's your time. Not encouraging it, just welcoming it. Alyssa. Heard it out. I'm muted.
I'm going to allow myself a moment of ignorance here because I am curious. We always have these conversations on a year-to-year basis. There's a sense of urgency, a sense of now. And I know this is not a place for questions, but here it is. Is there a mechanism for multi-year planning or multi-year large decisions that affect budgeting within the town?
Yeah, I would, I mean, I think I could invite Ken and Norm to go to talk about any more of your planning with CIP or the laws that you do. So Ken, why don't we start with you? But you're muted. Oh, hang on, hang on a second, Ken.
Yes. I think it was on my side. We, we do have a, uh, a long-term capital improvement program, uh, where we fund, uh, put, put funds aside for different appropriations, whether it's a fire truck or, or a thing like that, uh, for built major building renovations. And a- as I've mentioned, we've really just, uh, reinvigorated, let's say, the, uh, similar approach with the roads. So I, I, I think there is planning there. There's also some coordination with the schools so that, uh, the, the two bodies don't, uh, have large increases, uh, hitting the taxpayers at the same time.
So as I said, we are in a process of improving CIP. You know, we can look at for the next ten years, our facilities director has really done a great job zooming in on exactly what our needs are going to be for the next, uh, couple of years. And it's going to be important eighteen to twenty episodes. So we know what's going to be, uh, green, red, yellow, and we need to monitor, um, and episodes, which is really important. You know, when it comes to personnel, you know, the, the driving factor for that is, you know, we understand every year there's, um, retirement, it's something state that they don't give much. We have to pay it. We know that's every year. And then when planning for budgeting, we know, um, HGA has a contract coming up, that's how they contract coming up, um, on opposite years. So we know that when we're planning the future and both in our budget, we know there's many domas that will lead to a budget. Um, we don't know what's going to happen with students coming in. There's specific needs for years to come. We don't know that. But I would say the school district is going to continue to find a plan that we're in the right direction with us. Very proud of the district. I look forward to Jen coming here to present that to you.
And those are two really lovely answers for like run-of-the-mill planning multi-year. I moved here in twenty eighteen and there hasn't been a year since I've been here that the school budget hasn't been a point of strong debate within the community. And I guess what I'm asking is I hear folks saying that historical decisions made by taxpayers of a different generation may be contributing to some of the expenses we are experiencing. And where there is a space in the process that is not in the immediate, but is not short-term, that is not quick, to say, what is the big thinking? To say five years from now, a decade from now, what does our school district look like? How does it serve our children the same way while at the same time reducing costs? Be it combining elementary schools, be it exploring dual districts, like where is the space for innovation that isn't just meeting our immediate needs? And this is my ignorant speaking and I appreciate y'all letting me do it on Zoom, so thank you.
Thanks, Alyssa. I think we're going to peel it as like a comment. Yeah, you can bring back the school board, Norm. Any further comments or questions on any of the budgets?
Mark, very. Okay, you mean? Bob Mattio, one away, Park Ave. Uh, I did, uh, want to say that, um, I, for me personally, and I think people that are have, um, maybe some caution or some issues with the budget, don't feel that, I got to speak for myself. I don't feel that there's reckless spending here, so they, um, and I know there's been some shifting around. I think my, my point is we're at a point of no return. Um, but I, I don't think there's reckless spending going on in this budget. And I have a feeling if you did uphold, um, a lot of people that may have some, or, you know, voice and pushback kind of feel the same way. Thanks.
Thank you, Bob. I appreciate it, distinction. Anyone else? Okay, so, um, before we close the public hearing. Catherine.
Catherine Mattio, one away, Park Ave. Um, oh, sorry, my cuckoo clock's going off. Terrible timing. Um, I just wanted to say, I, I, I was a member of the strategic planning committee board when we were forming the strategic plan. And I think it would be beneficial, and I know we have it in the plan, that there, you know, are going to be like metrics, um, to show progress in all different areas of the plan. Um, and I think it would be beneficial for everyone in the town to see like, this is what we're doing for our math program. This is what we were spending and, and here's the proof that, you know, like we're improving those scores. And I know everybody hates to say, you know, like, like scores are so narrow and it's not fair, but like you need something. And I know we want to have something and we will have something. And I just, I would love to be able to see that included in these meetings, whether it's, you know, like the school finance meetings or something, just like I, I just, the accountability to, to show, like, other than just saying, we're right in the middle per student, so this is okay. I, I think we need more than that. And I think being able to show visually for everybody to see, like, this is what we're spending and this is why it's improving and this is why it's working, is, is a huge thing, um, that would be beneficial. And I don't have anything specific other than to say that I do appreciate the changes I've seen from prior years where you're including, you know, like anticipated expenses for like the food service. Um, those are, these are, I'm seeing a lot of good changes here. Um, I, I do think everybody feeling the crunch lately economically, um, are nervous. Um, so that's just, that's a side note. That's the situation we're in as a whole country, as a state. Um, it's just being accountable and staying accountable moving forward and, and, you know, on, on what we're spending and, and is it worth it? And are we doing the right things? And can we prove it? That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Last call. Okay, um, so just, I just wanted to let you know, it's going to happen next. We're going to, um, we're going to get all harder this time. And we'll adjourn the public hearing and take a short break. And then the budget committee will reconvene and we will be deliberating on voting on each of the post-war articles. You are most welcome to stick around. Um, we won't be taking any further public comment. Um, so stick around, uh, whether you can hop on Zoom and, uh, you can hear where we land. Thank you again to everybody who attended and, um, especially to those who shared your perspectives with us. All right.
Yeah.
Again, we'll be doing space.
I know.
Good.
Yeah.
Oh, thank you.
Oh, you got it?
Oh, yeah. So you can you can borrow that many of our happens.
Yes, that'd be great.
This is
Yep.
Right?
Yeah.
But this thing you can't pronounce.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
What changes are?
Yes.
Thank you, Andrew.
The tree you brought that down.
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh.
God.
Oh, Dave. Just showed up. Yeah, thank you.
Beautiful.
Yeah, okay, we're gonna get started again. And we start with the morning.
I'd like to make a motion to allow Ken Trum to participate in this meeting remotely.
Second. And my is to invite selectmen to be able to participate in the meeting remotely. Discussion. On paper, hi.
Hi.
Then.
Thank, thank you.
You're in, Mike. Okay, so we are going to deliberate, as they say, and vote on each budget and warrant article presented to the community. And I think what we'll do is just go in order in which we covered them tonight. So we'll start with the town operating budget and what else is less that we get a motion on that a motion is to support the warrant and you should read the warrant. And the materials handed in second. Over to you by the session. Would you like to make one for ten?
Okay. I, I, I think what you were saying, Marcus, I was having trouble hearing you is I'd like to move that the budget committee recommend for approval Article Three, the bond issue for road bridge and culvert rehabilitation.
Second.
Right. So Don said, I just want to make sure that that's that.
So do I? Do I need to read it?
But Neil says no.
Thank you.
He is such a good guy.
I mean, Mark says no.
Let me check with him, attorney.
Okay, so we've talked about this quite a bit as budget committee, but I want to invite any of the budget committee want to share comments, stop and look at this, please. Okay. It's all been said.
Very good.
Okay, so let's call a vote. All those in favor of recommending Article Three as presented. Say hi.
Hi.
Hi. Hey, Mark. Because Ken's proposing to do a roll call for three findings that were all of them, all of us. Oh, that's that's okay. You don't have to read it. Okay, so we're running Vicki.
Hi.
Norm.
Hi.
David.
Hi.
Ken?
Yes.
Dalton?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Krista?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
And Martin, yes. Okay. Ken?
Okay, next is I'll move that the budget committee recommend approval of article for the operating budget.
Second.
Was that you?
I seconded.
Okay. Okay. Any comments on the operating budget? Okay, I'm just not the one to comment. And in the base of the whole prediction that I've had recently, we tend to focus more, I would say more on the community when, in my experience, on school, I've been, since it's slumber and after their taxes will begin again. But if we at some point feel like we're getting to a point where the tax burden isn't sustainable for enough people in town, the budget committee wants to do something about it, I think we can't look solely to the small. And it's not a comment or a judgment on anything about the town operating budget, but with this reasonable and responsible office, or even the warrant, this is a a thing, I think we can look across all the budgets, about the time that we want to do that. Because they all affect the tax rate. And so with that said, so in support of it, this is something to share that, sorry. Ready for the vote? Okay. Victoria?
Hi.
Norm?
Hi.
David?
Hi.
And then?
Aye, aye.
Aye. Krista?
Hi.
Don?
All right.
Debbie?
I'll.
Ken?
Yes.
Mark is yes. Okay, and Neil, we need to do other ones to the to for
Yeah, okay, so we're gonna go through five, six, seven.
Ken, sorry if you can hear guys.
Okay, I'll I'll move that the budget committee recommend approval of Article Five, appropriation to capital reserve funds.
Is there a second?
Second.
No, I'm second. Any comments on the capital reserves?
I guess my, my only comment is one that I've made before, which is I wish we, we weren't bonding the roads. I wish that, that we were paying and I wish that I think it's good that we continue to put money into capital reserves, both for the town and the school. Because I just think it's a more predictable way to start to pay for expenses that are going to continue to come at us. Well, that's just the comment that I have about it.
Are the comments, I should pass, we should pass them. Okay. We will vote. Vicki?
Hi.
Norm?
Aye.
David?
Yes.
Yes.
Rich?
Do I say aye or yes?
Yes.
Krista?
Yes.
Yeah. Don? Debbie?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Mark is?
Yeah.
They're more formal down on that.
Okay, on to Article Six. Go ahead, Ken.
Okay, I'll move that the budget committee recommend approval of Article Six, appropriation to expendable trust funds.
Second.
Norm, seconds? Any comments on Article Six? Okay. Vicki?
Hi.
Norm?
Norm?
Aye.
David?
Yes.
Donovan?
Affirmative.
Rich?
Yes.
Yes. Debbie?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Article Seven.
Okay, I'll move that the budget committee recommend approval of Article Seven, appropriation to payroll liability trust fund.
Second.
Norm, seconds? Any discussion here? Okay. Vicki?
Of her.
Norm?
Chad?
Yes. David? Donovan?
Yes.
Rich?
See?
Hi.
Don?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Mark is yes. Okay, Article Eight.
Okay, and finally, the, I'll move the budget committee recommend approval of Article Eight, authorization to expend from payback special revenue front.
Second.
Norm, second. Any discussion?
I thought Norm could have seconded that a little faster.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Nobody wants to talk about payback bad. See that? Okay, Vicki?
Yes.
Norm?
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
Rich?
We?
Krista?
Yes.
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Mark is yes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, everybody.
All right, Don.
Feel better, Ken?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, Don, you wanna grab a switch out of my test. I turned on.
I'm gonna drop them. I move that the operating budget committee vote to approve the CVP budget as presented.
Second.
Krista, seconds? Any discussion?
I don't know if you want to make the same comment about, we could look to other places to reduce spending.
I'll work right.
It applied, okay.
Thank you for commenting for me.
Yeah.
Okay, Vicki?
Hi.
Don?
Hi.
Steve?
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Krista?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Mark is yes. All right.
Rich?
Let's pass that over to Vicki?
It's a joke in here, so.
You gotta be, this one.
How does that understandable?
Whatever Ken, whatever Neil says.
You can read the article.
There's two, because there's
Yeah. Yeah, so let's do one at a time. It's easy.
Just Vicki, check with Neil. Seriously.
I'd like to make a motion that the budget committee recommend approval for Hockman Precinct more Article Three to Steve Cavill, precinct will vote to raise and appropriate the budget committee recommended operation budget in the sum of $50,000 to influence the recent water treatment and offer institutions of no more than $50,000 in bonds, notes in accordance with the regulations of the Canadian Civil Act, Article 33 and to authorize the multiple officials to issue and negotiate such bonds for those and to determine the rate of the interest thereon recommendations made by the precinct commissioners and water board commissioners.
Second.
Thank you.
Do you want?
Any discussion to start? Okay, thank you.
Hi.
Norm?
Aye.
Steve?
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
Rich?
Yes.
Krista? Yes.
Yes.
Debbie?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
And Mark is yes.
I'd like to make a motion that the budget committee recommend approval for the Hockman Precinct for Article Four to see if the amount of precinct will turn to raise an appropriate $116,838 in general expenses and debt service to the water department. Water administration, $5,000, water services, $92,200, and interest of $4,149 and a loan principal payment of $15,489 on precincts debt incurred for the waterworks services. This appropriation will be offset by $72,258 in loser fees, $40 in interest and $44,548 in unsigned bond amounts. Actually, I took the articles to apologize.
I'll move that one second down to you.
Thank you. Any discussion of that? Okay, Vicki?
Hi.
Norm?
Aye.
Steve?
Yes.
Jonathan?
Aye.
Rich?
Aye.
Krista?
Hi.
Don?
Aye.
Debbie? Ken?
Aye.
And Mark is yes. Yeah, I got everyone's.
Lastly, I'd like to make a motion that the budget committee recommend approval of Hockman Precinct for Article Five to see the precinct will raise will vote to raise the sum of $29,237 in expenses from precinct appropriations $6,932 from unsigned bond amounts and $22,341 from tax.
Uh, second.
Thank you.
I wasn't
Norm, second. Any discussions? Okay, Vicki?
Hi.
Norm?
Aye.
Steve? Yes.
Donovan?
Yes. Yes.
Krista? Don?
All right.
Debbie?
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Mark, yes. Thank you, Ian.
Thank you very much.
Okay. What's the score? Tom?
Do you want to go in order or did you like to add the comment? It's going hard. Sure, I'd like to make a motion to see if the student people will vote up to raise appropriate the budget committee who's recommended about $24,892,240 for schools for the payment of salaries to the district officials and needed to enter the payment without the use of the district or to take any other action in relation there to this article designed for the budget committee in any other warrant articles.
Second?
All second.
Steve, second. Okay, let me up to the committee for any comments.
I do. Yeah. I just kind of put together a little.
Please.
Thank you. Well, I first want to thank everybody that came out and shared their input. It's it's all valued and appreciated very, very much. The budget committee is here for everyone in the county. And this has been a very difficult budget season. It's been real hard work, repaying all of this for everybody, for both boards, and I think for the budget committee making the decisions that, that we've had to make. We all know that the challenges that inflation has presented for us all. With property taxes being a paramount tax revenue revenue source for towns in this state of New Hampshire, it's clear that changes need to be made at the state level to ease the burden on taxpayers. But in the meantime, as we strive to make those necessary changes, it's imperative that we are careful not to sacrifice the quality of the services and education that we've all come to expect and appreciate. I find myself encouraged for the future by several factors that I just wanted to mention. Several bills are being presented at the state level that would actually support most of our schools in the state. I also look forward to the creation of a school policy for class sizes and to the level staffing and programming to assist in a more stable budget with fewer changes year to year. While many things are out of our control, such as increasing supplies, maintenance costs, overall inflation, some things are in our control. Continuing road maintenance, providing fair wages for employees, and an education that can meet the needs of our students. I worry that being short sighted could greatly impact our learners. Preventing and intervening to fill in learning gaps. Preventing and intervening to fill in learning gaps before they become serious learning issues is not only good for the learner. It is a physically responsible endeavor that will prevent far more costly interventions down the road. And that's what I had to say. Thank you.
Did I just go wrong here? Okay.
Okay.
Oh, well, I could not have, uh, put it more eloquently than that, so I agree with everything that you said. I won't repeat any of those points, but note for the record that I do agree with them. Um, I wanted to add my immense thanks as well to everyone who participated, um, in the budget season this year. Um, I agree that was a difficult one. Um, and I just feel immensely grateful to be part of a community that is, um, so thoughtful and, um, participatory in our city of B D. I think that it speaks, um, incredibly well of the community that we all are a part of, um, that we can have this civic dialogue about these important issues. Um, and so, um, again, I won't repeat all the points that you put very well, but I just wanted to note that, um, the community's participation in this, um, is immensely valued. I think I speak for everyone on the committee when I say that. Um, and so, um, I look forward to the school's commitment and the board, the school board's commitment to assessing class size policy and the work we can do in the future. Um, and hopefully alleviate some of this going forward.
If you're, if you're ready, you got the mic.
Um, this budget is, uh, very difficult on those in the fixed income. I think that one thing this committee could do to alleviate some of the concerns in the community that I've heard is to recommend a, an upper ceiling of the number of employees at the school on a twelve-month basis. Um, looking at the total FTEs, uh, and help me out, Michelle, I got this number wrong. Uh, one hundred ninety-six point four five FTEs for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, uh, year. Certainly, we can't afford to have more mouths to feed coming into the school system. Creating new positions and then funding those positions. We can barely keep up with the positions that we've got now. Our tax rate is what, thirty-two dollars per thousand? Perhaps it'll be going up to thirty-four or more after this budget goes through on, on, on budgets, town and school. So I was wondering if the Budget Committee might be interested, might be interested in proposing a letter and sending it to the school board recommending that we for twelve months have a hiring freeze at an FTE level of one ninety-six point four five, assuming that that's the correct number to workshop.
What was the number again, Rich? Sorry, that is, it's. I know it's in there, just.
Is driven here at one ninety-six point four five.
Thanks.
I get, I guess, um, you know, I've certainly made my feelings about the school budget known. I would just take this opportunity, first of all, to echo the comments of my fellow board members. I am particularly encouraged in this time of polarization that we have so many citizens coming here and disagreeing in a civil manner. And I think that that kind of participation speaks well about our community. I also think to echo, uh, something that you were talking about, Debbie, is, you know, given inflation and given, um, the sort of gap between the very wealthy, those who are not. We simply cannot cut the school budget enough to fix this problem. And I just urge everyone to really consider when they make their votes at the state level. Uh, to really consider what positions, uh, your candidates are taking about potential revenue streams other than real estate taxes that could go to, to the schools in the state. You know, the pledge is great, but, um, the difficulties that we have year in and year out to fund our schools and to care for our children is a direct result of that pledge. So that's what I have to say.
Other comments?
Norm? You want me to, I was gonna wait till everyone's done, I can. I can go now.
I know, Austin.
All right.
Um, I'm gonna vote now on this lovely budget. And so I wanted to share, um, quickly why, but at first I think acknowledge the strong look of the school board and the administration and also likewise to the select board and the town administration. Um, and I think, you know, this, this sort of gets at what you were saying about earlier. You know, I believe that both the original school budget and the revised proposal were reasonable and responsible. Uh, and they sought to reconcile the interests and needs of the school system and the student body versus taxpayer. Um, so I think you can believe that budget amusement mall is still decided. It's not sustainable or not something you're comfortable owning for. It's paradox. Um, so I'm voting no for following reasons. In, uh, in twenty twenty-two, the town's tax rate was thirty-two dollars and twenty-five cents per thousand dollars of assessed value. That was the fifth highest in the country. And I don't bring it up to place blame, um, or cast judgment. I do mention it because the simple fact is our taxes are not getting. And we know that the impact of high property taxes is felt disproportionately by some of the lower rural populations. With nearly a four point seven million dollar increase in operating budget for the past three years, which translates, you know, twenty-five percent for, I just, I don't feel like we're getting the mark on the sustainable school budget. This budget draws heavily from Article ten, funds revenue, uh, reducing tax impacts at a level that doesn't appear to need to be sustainable. Um, and in addition to what's been put forward this year about the school attitude, we've got some significant budget needs coming down the pipe. Um, the town road fund in the past, as we talked about, it's not gonna have an impact on this year's tax rate, but it's gonna be thirty-seven cents in twenty twenty-four for the next ten years. The town's almost certainly gonna be coming with a bond of a million dollars or more of the state mandate in the net, except to the unions. Um, as Norm said, the school's gonna be negotiating as contract next year, the teachers on the phone here. Um, maybe a safety bond. Uh, this stuff was discussed as possible against the morning last night. There's a lot of stuff coming down the pipe. And with about three quarters of the school budget comprised of personnel, just, I believe the one that I've never given alerts we have on the expense side for slowing the growth of the budget system. How we can operate the school system and deliver on quality education with lower personnel costs? And, and just to be clear about lower personnel costs, um, I do view this as, I don't mean reducing compensation. I was proud to vote in favor of the S and H A contracts last year and the strong belief in the lack of fair competitive competition for employees. In putting forward the revised budget at the January twenty-fifth, we had the school forward to a small and meaningful step in the direction of looking at the workforce. And, you know, a lot's been said about the potential loss of for the great teacher, and I don't disagree with any of it, um, but in reality, the administration would have potentially been looking at operating elementary schools with one particular teacher that's been receiving. What would have decided based on enrollment and re-graders out of that staff, each of the grades. Regardless of what grade might have been impacted, according to the state guidance and the administration, what we turned on the twenty-fifth was that we weren't looking at doing large class sizes. Um, I personally struggle more with the, with the potential loss of interventions position. Um, but also trust the administration, the revised force that I came up with. So I'll refer to that. So for me, supporting the revised school budget would have prompted an open, honest, and difficult conversation about class sizes, educational outcomes, and sustainable budgets. At the school district meeting, where typically hundreds of voters are present. We've got, uh, we have about twenty-five to thirty in the room tonight, about eighteen on, on Zoom, but hundreds come to the school district meeting, and it would have forced that conversation uh, in that form, and I think that conversation is needed, and I feel it's much less likely to happen now, at least this year at that meeting. Um, and finally, just, I want to recognize that some feel these changes to the budget, uh, that were proposed, which trans, which translated to everyone sent on the tax, so they are so small, they're almost meaningless and not worth the impact. And, you know, is it worth it? That's a values judgment, um, as for everyone on the side of their own, but the highest tax rate in the country, I just disagree with the premise that we shouldn't consider a reduction in the proposed operating budget, which in this case was a reduction, it's merely a, like, a smaller increase. Um, just because of the vaccine won't generate a substantial tax savings. As a budget committee member, trying to assist the voters in improving appropriation of health funds, I, I just don't feel that's inappropriate for us to consider budgets, just my perspective. Um, so again, this one explains why I'm, well, you know, some of my neighbors, my crowd, will be upset with me, um, but that's how I feel.
There you go. Share what you still can. Neil? Do you want to speak to it? Ken, do you want to say anything?
Okay, um, I, I, I support, uh, the motion as Norm has made it. Um, last, uh, at our last meeting, when we did the straw poll, I, uh, had similarly supported it because I thought the cuts were penny wise and pound foolish, and I haven't heard anything that would change my mind on that. Um, for, for years, this Budget Committee has, you know, uh, understood the unfairness of state tax system. And, uh, it continues and, uh, uh, you know, we, we can again register our, our concerns there. I just not particularly hopeful that we're gonna see many results. But the town, to me, the town wants a very good, uh, education system, and, uh, this budget will provide it.
Well, I want to say thank you for all your comments. You know, all of you have, have always have pushed me as a board member to work with you guys, communicate everything you guys have asked, and to really come back here with and answer. Vice versa, but in order for me to be able to be a better board member goes to improve our budgeting process with you. You know, it's been, I think about three and a half years of being with you guys, and I have to say it's, seemed like it's been ten years, to be honest with you. Because when I started, I had hair. When I, when, and your, your minutes aren't as long, you know, before I came on. But one thing that really, um, happy to say is I, I can advocate with this number. And the reason for that for me is because it was something that we'd started at the beginning that we really took a deep dive into the budget to get where we were. And as one board member, for me, it was a very typical choice to bring to an amendment, but it was to really, to, to really, you know, send a message that we hear you and work in relationship because it is your number that goes to the town. And when you guys restored the, the number, based on the people that came out, you guys did listen. You guys did take the time to take that in. And everyone was respectful, and I was excited to see what you guys listened to the community. And happy to take this number back to the school board next, uh, tomorrow night. I, I I'm proud of what we've accomplished as a board. I really mean that. In, in the last three years, improvement in our budgeting process, CIP, there's so much in the future of the district that's gonna have some savings for us. From sustainability, you know, we're looking at the energy plan, what we're gonna be looking at, um, trying to find ways to reduce costs down the road, which we know our budget drivers can be utilities, can be many different things. The board will continue to find ways to be able to find savings in this budget with vibrant practices to everything that we need to do in order to, to let kids. And as a father, you know, I'm gonna take my hat off as a school board member, you know, it's, I can relate to how the parents feel. I do. And then when I put my hat back on as a school board member, I know I have a job to do also because I'm elected by the taxpayers. And tonight, when I spoke in front of the community, you know, I, I thanked our taxpayers for supporting our students. There's a lot of them, I understand, do struggle more to pay our taxes, but a lot of people do want to see our kids continue to succeed. So I'm very proud that we're, we got to this point. And I just hope, no matter what happens, moving forward with this budget committee, we continue to push, ask the questions. You guys pushed me to be a better person and, and really communicate what I needed to do to give you guys the information, and I'm proud of that. Because we all, we all really worked together on that. I hope this budget committee can support this number and let the town have their vote. I think it's really important that there is a discussion impact on, impact with supporting our students with the number that I presented tonight. Thank you.
Any further comments?
Pretty. Would it be appropriate to make a motion now to hold on sending a, a letter to the school board, or should that be under other reasons?
We already have a motion table.
I think we can take a motion after. Okay. Perfect. Okay. For us, Vicki.
And I'm voting, um, supporting your original number.
The original number, which was what the Budget Committee recommended, uh, in one of the meetings.
Hi.
Norm.
I.
Yes.
The whole thing?
Yes.
Rich?
No.
Krista?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Debbie. Ken?
Yes.
And Marcus. Well, I do the trust fund, if you don't mind, actually.
No problem at all.
Yeah. Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion. The school judge will vote to raise and appropriate two hundred thousand dollars to, to be added to the school district bill for repair maintenance fund established in nineteen ninety-three and renamed, uh, March ninth, two thousand nineteen, school district meeting.
Your second.
Very good.
Okay, Don's second is, okay, we open this comment.
I'm gonna go first. Um, this one's a hard one because I, I definitely think that we, as a community, have to get used to funding the appropriate amount for our CIP in order to maintain what we have accomplished as a goal. You know, as Chair and Building Project and Board have, have seen our facilities improved. It's gonna take money in order to maintain what we've had. And I think Mr. Berger said it perfectly tonight, you know, can't continue to take from there. Reduce it because we're just in the same spot that we are before. Now, I do believe that two hundred thousand will help this year. I strongly believe that because throughout this whole budgeting process, we have heard from the community, there's money that's come back from the building project, which was voted, which was, um, helped alleviate pressure this year in CIP. And that is something that, you know, we can look at, say, all right, encourage the community to move forward. We have a plan that we really need to follow moving forward. It's gonna take us working together to change and maintain that to keep our facilities. And, uh,
Bye. Um, so I voted, uh, against this, our last vote, and I'm gonna vote against it again. Um, because I don't think that seventy-five thousand should be taken out. I think we should be at, at a minimum uh, seventy-five. Um, and I've talked about my reasoning for this before, but I'm reminded of when I joined. reminded of when I joined the budget committee, it was right on the tail end of the towns looking at the rather substantial bond to try to deal with the degradation of our facilities, and the fact that we had neglected them similar to the roads. And I, it was, the entire time I've been in the budget committee, there has been a call for planning and predictability in the CIP, which the school board has done a great job in developing. And what we were told is that even if this 275 number were used, it would still be under the amount that we should be putting into our facilities. And I think the point that everyone owns these facilities, it's a really good one. Money spent on maintenance is money that is protecting all of our property and investment. And it concerns me that I understand that this is a difficult time. I understand that inflation is high. But the degradation of a root is not going to wait until it's a good time. And so I just think that we need to be putting money away predictably every year and planning on these things, or we're going to be right back in the same situation, or the situation where with the roads. And we're going to be looking at some substantial bond to try to make up. And who knows what the cost of money will be at that time. So that's the reason that I'm going to be voting against this.
Other comments?
I'm going to support the 200,000, because it was recommended. I'm the last person to basically give in to kind of preventive maintenance. I believe in it totally. But I think this is so much pressure on this particular budget year. This is a token amount that sort of keeps our mind checked, that we've got to be a little more conservative. And this is the least supposedly of all the cuts we could make, both in detriment to the school and to, you know, the budget in general. We've certainly put substantial amounts of money into the school this last year, and we're going to continue to put a lot of money into the whole maintenance issue, I think, this year, with so much pressure on it. I'd like to see us just do some kind of a dent to this thing, even if it's so minor as it is.
I also am going to vote for the 200,000 dollar figure. I believe that we owe it to the community to mitigate very large increases in our taxes that we're going to have this year next year.
Actually, Mark, you pass that back down.
I also am going to vote for the 200,000 dollar number. I hear you, Jonathan. In many ways, I do agree, but I think, ultimately agree with Dawn, that this both set us on the right path in terms of a substantial, although not enough, investment, that hopefully I would like to see the school board and this committee continue to expand on year after year. So my hope would be that this is enough money that sets a first stepping stone towards irresponsibly responsible funding for capital projects. We'll also recognize, like you said, Dawn, that it is a particularly tough budget year, with that.
May I ask a normal question?
All right.
Budgetary pressures were not affected by other impending crises, and we were to put away a maintenance trust that was appropriate, based on what you were saying, two percent of the total. I can't remember, I put it, but what would that look like? What would that move? Just, I'll just put on that clarification. If you think we have to concern yourself with the fact that we're all going to build the pinch, or the pinch, with care over the, of the extreme increases in expenses, what would the school board, in the back world, put into this trust?
Based on army is the actual number that begins with 275, and the direction from budget committee was to go that, and look at areas in that, and also in our budget. But, can I give you a little bit of money real quick? Mr. Ben?
I love.
Okay. Sure. I'll bring you the money. So in the new, say, when you say 275 was the first year with a climbing up to $450,000 yearly request, that would be the proper one for a year.
Yeah, if you took the other comment of two percent of, sorry, seventy-five million dollar investment, that's a million five.
But that wouldn't necessarily, sorry. That wouldn't necessarily be going into the trust fund. That would include actual maintenance of the ongoing, right?
I have to ask Mr. Burgess that. I believe so.
Should they all have a name?
Thank you. So, yes, Dawn, you're exactly right. If we look at the standardized, generally accepted formula for what an institution would put forward for their capital renewal, in our case, based on the spring footage of the facility and the replacement cost of that facility, which runs above, I would say, about $450 a square foot, we would be looking at a target of a million and a half dollars. Now, we know that that's not a realistic number for a number, because as one is, it's way beyond the level that we're down for. And it's also, it doesn't completely reflect all the work, roughly four and a half, probably plus to five million dollars we've done as part of the building project. Keeping in mind of that four and a half and five million dollars, a lot of that was converted agents from previous issues. So that's a target number, that's a target number that is generally accepted. But in this case, I, I haven't reviewed the CIP, the superintendent and his team that brought it forward. I would say that's the number that you would want to consider going forward. Does that answer the question?
It does.
Any other questions?
He's doing some math.
Jonathan, I, I understand where you're coming from. Just wanted to make that very clear. You were at the board meeting last night, you heard exactly what we're going to do with our facilities. So I just wanted you to understand. But in this situation, we need to do a, early.
I was saying that before we voted on revised operating budget, that was a launch in for a twenty-two, I would, I would have voted to return to the original. But after we voted to go back to the original school budget, I, I just, I feel like we don't have a sustainable, possible budget. And I blame the school a bit, even more. And I, I, I thought a lot of it, like you said earlier, Jen, like it's not right to get, you know, students versus facilities, you know, considering that at all. And I would rather produce the operating budget and hire staff properly, and invest in facilities. But we're not proposing that this year, except for the budget committee. So I'm going to look for what the school boards before and community best desires. Any other comments?
Can you just clarify what we're going to vote on?
Yes. So are we ever going to go on the proposed school maintenance trust fund award, which is $200,000? Okay. Thank you.
Or, or I?
No.
Also, no.
Rich?
Yes.
Krista?
Yes.
Dawn?
Yes.
Danny? Ken?
Yes.
Mark is, yes. Okay, you're done, right?
I'm done.
Great. So Rich is the, the budget committee, consider, and Rich is going to turn it back over to you to restate it again.
Okay. So we have, Michelle, please correct me if I'm wrong here, 196.45 FTEs proposed for the 2023, 2024 year. We've been told by the school board, and I think by Norm as well, that we are fully staffed, that we have the capability with the employees in this budget to satisfy all the needs of our children. Therefore, it seems only reasonable that we impose a recommended hiring freeze above that number, perhaps to allow the number to go higher than that in the case of an IEP. But in terms of regular employees, a cap should not in any way harm the school. And I think it would send a good signal to the community that the budget committee is trying to work towards a sustainable budget, and that any, how do I put this, any kind of preferential hiring or hiring for more quality or any kind of language that you might choose, that we focus on the needs of the students and maintaining the school as it is with the number of employees we have. So I propose that we, I'd like to make a motion that we send, that we draft a letter to the, to the school board recommending a fixed number of employees at 196.45, with the exception of extra people needed currently.
Okay, so Rich has made a motion. Second.
Second. Okay. Can I ask a question?
Of course. Now that there's a second, there's a question.
Um. Does, and Michelle, the person who addressed this to, I'm going to ask you, does the 196.45 includes brand funded and one-time sponsored?
Just look.
Thank you.
Problem of questions, since we have the expert, I might have heard something different from Rich in the last few months, when we were talking about the budget and the school. My impression is they said they were working towards level funding, not that they were at level funding. In fact, we had a discussion one night, because my own children, to be selfish about it, were affected by the absence of one high school level. So I think I want some clarification whether it's accurate that you're, that you said that we are at full staffing, or that we're working towards full staffing. And if it's the latter, do we have an idea of how much more staff that we're talking?
Your. Your, your, it's for, Michelle, you're sort of wrong.
I'll, I'll, I'll clarify that. I said, well, we're, it works. But the next question, I think that needs to go back and get to the board, because that's their purview on what they are, what that number is they're working.
So tonight, we talked about letting the board have a discussion on what we'd like to, for example, with class sizes, right? It has something to do with, with what we're going to have to do down the road with the program. And I don't think, I, I guess my question, and this is not to be, you know, I'm a very respectful guy, I always respect you guys, is this the role of budget committee to tell superintendent of schools what he needs to be regarding his hiring practices? That's what I'd like to know.
Other comments?
The way the budget committee used to operate, we used to, when Steve Chamberlain was in, he would give us a list of people that he's, would like to add to the district, positions that he'd like to add to the district next year. But a year and a half ago, we kind of changed our accounting system. And now, the budget committee just is supposed to give the, the school board a bottom line figure, and then allow the school board to decide, you know, the people to, how many people they want to hire within that funding level. But I think, I kind of think in the back of my mind that we lost the check and balance by doing it this way, that, for example, if savings come in, in the middle of the year, and there's a position that the, the school board has kind of wanted to create, but they never had the money, that they could use those savings, or perhaps end of the year, fund dollars or something to create a new position. And that adds insurance costs in that year that they could cover. But next year, we have to full, cover the full cost of that position. So not having the budget committee any longer discussing whether we want to bring a new employee in, or new hire in, I feel we use the, the budget committee and the community, it'll have a little bit of a disadvantage, because funds could be sort of baked into that bottom line figure that the school board is asking for, so that if any, any surplus has come up, we could just hire another person. And since the school's costs are, what, labor is eighty-five percent of the school's costs, it sort of leaves the budget committee out of the discussion of eighty-five percent of the student's budget. And, and also, once an employee gets, I remember Steve Chamberlain mentioned that once an employee gets in, and, and gets tenured, it's, it's also, it becomes very difficult to downsize that phone.
I appreciate your opinion. I'm happy to bring this back to the school board and provide the feedback to them. I think the only comment I'm going to say about the checks and balances is that as an elected official of the school board, we're the ones that approve the hiring. So we are the ones, you know, that, that is our job. But I will take your comments too, back to the Appleton School, School Board.
The other thing too, is that I don't think this motion would tell the school board what to do. It's just a recommendation.
I think that Dawn was going to.
I would not be in favor of this at all. I think this is way beyond our purview, and I think it gets into Michael management and any company, and I consider the school a company. You, it's, it's, it's prerogative as to how many people they have. We have a, we have the final recommended check and balance when they're, during the discussions, and when we come in here for their, their budget numbers and presentation. That's when we have the check and balance to get into the weeds of telling them and giving them a cap. I would be totally upset.
I, I also would be against it at, at this stage, certainly. I mean, my mind's open to anything, and I would listen to anything, being mindful of Dawn's point. But it just strikes me that there's going to be an election for budget committee members. Like, we may not have the same composition, we may, when we start up again for our next, you know, session, there could be a huge influx of, of people, of students, there could be a bunch of people leaving. There are a lot of variables that, it just strikes me as premature to try to take this position right now, and to even discuss it right now. I mean, discussion's fine at any time, but it just strikes me as, I certainly wouldn't have the kind of information to be able to say what the school should be thinking about next, you know, next year, I, next school year. So for me, I just, I, I would vote no on this.
So for me, I just, I I I would vote no on this right now.
Yeah, I'm looking forward to next year along the lines of what Mark Rangell has talked about that with a new superintendent, a new board, looking at how education is going to be delivered five years down the pipe. Uh, we're we're all in this budget crunch and whether that means different class size, whether it means different studies, and whether it involves a different approach to how we teach kids. And there's, there's got to be new ways of doing it. Every every profession improves and finds new ways of doing things. And I'm really looking forward to next year's discussion and next year after that to see what five years down the pipe looks like. And it 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 may come to something what you you're saying, but I I'm not, I'm not ready for that yet. I want to see the provisions of next year's work and the year after that.
Oh, go ahead, Debbie.
I guess I would just like to jump on that and say, um, I appreciate what Rich is saying, that we're looking for a little bit of control over the budget in- increases. But I would also like to just say, I hope that when, for example, the policy for class size is being considered that teachers um have put in that too, um, and that they can say, you know, whether they feel well, we feel this number is accurate. They're the ones that are in the classroom with the kids. And um, so I just hope that they're ready for this, whatever decision they make.
I didn't want to jump in out of turn. Um. You know, I don't think that I am ready to pull the, pull the trigger, if you will, on um getting to this level of micromanagement of the the school board um and the administration. Um, however, I would, um, I do want to push back slightly, um, Norm, on something that you said in regards to um you, the role of this committee. I do think that it is a fair statement. Um, when personnel, like I think it's been widely accepted across this board now that personnel is a driving cost. And that is true, then having recommendations or opinions on staff, not to say you cannot or you will not or hire this science teacher, not a math teacher, not like that, but having um thoughts, recommendations, opinions on the staffing practices does seem to be under the purview of this committee because it is such a heavy driving factor of cost. And so while I'm not quite ready to support this measure, I would say I don't think that we are doing our job as a budget committee and listening to the taxpayers if we're not making clear the position of the committee to the board and administration on the effect that has on budget. And so I, like Debbie and Don have said, I I think that we feel a lot of trust with administration so far, particularly since the new superintendent came on board. And I also look forward to seeing the fruits of that bear out. And I'm placing some trust as a board member that that opinion has been heard without the necessity of signing a formal letter to that.
Mark, if I could jump in?
Yes, please.
Um, I similarly uh disagree with the motion, I, but I understand what's behind it and uh I think it should be clear to the administration uh uh that this concerns, you know, what's going to be happening to the tax rate in future years and affordability and all. I'm concerned about this specific motion going beyond uh the purview of the budget committee, I think, as Don had mentioned. And I'm looking at it, well, is it, would that set up the slippery slope so that maybe next year uh the budget committee says to the town, you can't hire another police officer? Even if the town felt it was absolutely necessary. Uh, and so uh, at the end of the day, I'm I'm opposed to uh putting this kind of a letter together, but I understand where Rich is coming from.
Would you like to withdraw? It's here, I'll draw the book.
Okay. We're good then.
Okay.
Is that all right?
Sure.
Thank you, Rich. Thank you all, um, for the comments there. So, um we are done with the warning articles. And we just have a couple of pieces of business. Yeah, we've got some news to approve. So I just want first to thank Carol, our minutes maker, who joined on January 11 for America on Me. And then uh, the second meeting was January 25th, AKA would be on the Me, uh, and 9:00 is 9:00, so Carol is going to give you. Um, let's start with the minutes of January 11, 2023, and let's start our motion.
All second.
Second, okay, let me ask if there's any comments or questions, clarifications on the minutes. Norm and Mike will do it. If not, um, we'll go around with Warren, Vicki?
Hi.
Dorf.
Yes. Yep.
Yes.
Yes.
And Marcus, yeah? Okay, and then um, next one is the news for January 25th. 23rd.
Move it.
Second.
Okay, I had a couple of quick um changes on this one to less. Um, just on each and um, in the middle, under my name. The third one was Kennedy's school system to be run with a smaller force with the support of the town. And I think what I said was Kennedy's school system to be run with a smaller workforce. Um, I don't think the school system could be run with a smaller force, so just approaching it really wide to the smaller. There you go, Jim.
So I'll make the motion to approve the minutes based on Mr. Zankel's amended minutes.
Second.
Do you think, Kelly? Okay. Vicki?
Hi.
Norm?
I.
Steve? Yes.
Jonathan?
Yes.
Rich?
Hi.
Krista?
Hi.
Hi.
Debbie?
Hi.
Ken?
Yes.
And Laura, yes. Um, great. Um, and with that, I think we're
Say that.
Man.
All right, thank you. Um. Two minutes. So I was just, I don't know when we're meeting again. I don't think it's going to be till after the district meeting, and I just wanted to kind of talk to you, Mark, and note it's a unique situation with the budget process, but usually the budget committee does make some formal statement. I don't know if that's something the budget committee would like to do for our district. That's usually how I've seen it happen. Um, but I respect that that's not the direction we'd like to.
Yeah, I think the way it's worked, Norm, is that if the school board would like the budget committee to leave comments and I think it's already put in a note too. Um, I can't remember, that um, we can do that. And same with the select board, and in some areas they have and some areas they have not. Um, so I would sense put it back to you, the school board, would like us to, or help you to this chair.
Okay. Yeah, so tomorrow night, when, tomorrow night we'll have our meeting and we will leave vote on this number that you guys approved tonight. And I will bring it back to the same, would you like a statement from the budget committee that we've done in our meetings? And I'll email you, let me go from there. Okay. Um, last thing is, thank you for a great season. I don't know if I'm going to be back here next year. I'm not, no, I just really, yeah, on a side note, you guys are amazing. And I'm very lucky to have worked with some of the greatest people in town and um, you have brought out the best in me as an individual. And um, no matter who's here next year, challenge them, because that's what really makes the person great to see. And to um, have less minutes and less less time of, you know, talking. So thank you guys so much. Again.
Thank you, Norm. And also anything flowers. Um, to you guys for sticking it out this long, coming to meet us or a chance and to kneel. Um, but really, uh, it's a great group and I've been on the committee for seven years and this is an awesome, a great to work with.
The five people still on Zoom.
And the five people still.
Generation today. Six. No, it's a procedural question.
It's not speed.
Procedure question only, how are we going to sign the MS forms?
Can we adjourn and then sign them or do we need to? Yeah, very well, yeah. So, um, the town, they're both recent here. The school, this is can't be done until after.
Yeah, we're going to go tomorrow.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll sign them tonight if we want to, you know, the components. So we can talk to the school, certainly have a week here, have you stop and sign them?
We can't do the docu-signing.
You guys are so technical.
Oh, that's not much easier.
That's what we did last year.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The docu-signings.
Boss, we're getting their, yeah, uh, I think you need to sign them.
Okay.
So you'll get a note out to the committee when they're ready for signature.
And just already voted on, so it's just, okay, just. Do that again? Okay, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Oh, my God, I gotta go around the horn. Thank you. Morgen. Should say no, just for the.
No.
Jonathan?
Yeah, Rich?
No.
Krista?
More cheesecake.
Debbie? Ken?
Yes.
Yes. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, well.